And you ready?
I don't think so. Yeah, I'm ready, Mayor, thank you.
Recording in progress.
Welcome to the November 26, 2024 Millbrae City Council meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:03 PM. City Clerk, could you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
Councilmember Riley?
Aye.
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye, present.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Pappin? Mayor Fung?
Here.
All members of the City Council are present.
Thank you so much. And for those who are able, please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, please be seated. And today, we're gonna begin our meeting with the recognition of the Millbrae veterans, Edward Tadishy. And we just had a very nice reception out in the lobby of the City Hall. And to recognize all the veterans who dedicated their service to the safety and the security of our country. And thank you so very much. And I'd like to ask Councilmember C.C. Riley to lead us in this recognition of a Millbrae veteran, Mr. Edward Tadishy.
Dear Mr. Tadishy and all of our veterans, thank you for your service and sacrifice for our country and our freedom. We are deeply grateful to all of our veterans and law enforcement, law enforcement officers today and every day for putting your lives on the line to protect us. Your courage, strength, and dedication to keep us safe will never forget it. We are forever grateful. There aren't enough words to express our gratitude for all of the veterans who have served our country. Your bravery, dedication, and service deserve our deepest respect. Mr. Edward Tadishy, you hold the unique dedication of being the first man to have your name inscribed in the regulation book in July 1950, having you begun your service in Marine Corps in 1948 before transaction to the Air Force. You have left a remarkable legacy as a talent musician in the Air Force Band. You brought both honor and inspiration to your service. Tonight, it's our privilege to have you perform as God bless America for us. Thank you.
And Mr. Edward Tadishy, would you like to come up and say a few words?
Ninety-five and still alive. Well, I'm no real hero. I played in the band, in the Air Force, but even in the military. So, I was lucky. I did great TV shows, radio shows, concerts, and the State Fair. And one time, they flew students to see the city, Utah, for one night, so they did everything. Hero. I think what we did, we helped the morale of the people that did the hard part in the war. And a lot of memories to take about. I had three brothers in World War II, and one was killed. So, he has a lot of memories, and I wanted to make sure I did it, so it opened up in his shop. So, maybe I'll sing a little song. Why don't we do it? It's not picking up right. Not picking up. That's picking up right. God bless America. Land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains, through the prairie, through the ocean, white with foam. God bless America, my home, sweet home. God bless America, my home, sweet home. I think I have to go to the bathroom now. Thank you all for coming.
You know, Mr. Tadishy, I just have to say, you know, as people said, you know, public service is a lifetime endeavor. And this is truly, you are the truly living example of that, of that saying. And it's wonderful to have you in our community, it's our blessing to have you in our community. And in my book, you are the true American hero. And thank you so much, very much, for your service. Thank you, all of you. If we can have a photo with you at the podium, it would be lovely to do that. We'll come to you if you like. Excellent. So, next up, we have the Halloween candy wrapper, art contest winner, and Millbrae Environmental Program hosted the first-ever Halloween Candy Rapper Art Contest, where participants were encouraged to create art pieces using leftover candy wrappers or other recycled material. This project not only helped reduce waste, but also inspired innovative ways to reuse materials, raising awareness about sustainability and the importance of rethinking how we use resources. A total of sixty-four entries were submitted, each demonstrating incredible creativity and environmental awareness. We're proud of the young people in our city for their dedication to making a positive impact on the environment, and we're excited to announce that the three winners of this contest selected by the City of Millbrae Green Team from elementary school, middle school, and high school, based on their theme, originality, and their effort. So, I'm proud to announce the elementary school winner, Niko Nishikawa. And and then the Lumina Park Elementary School, Dracula King Bob, which is his art piece, it's right here. Beautiful piece. And our middle school winner is Emily Chang. And it's a zombie hand-holding eyeball, right there. As you can see, it took quite a bit of M&amp;M's to get there. And then also, our high school winner is Kayla Yin Chow from Mills High School with a white rabbit candy, which is right here as well. This particular one is particularly interesting, and it reminds me of sort of a collective memory when I was a kid, because this is the type of candy that I eat when I was a kid, even before I was a teenager. So, this particularly one really hits home, and I'm really thankful to be able to see that here today. So, with that, I'd like to invite Niko to come in to the podium and say a few words. Yeah.
I am so thankful to be here on this night with all of you guys. I thank Millbrae Council and all of you here to honor all the veterans who have served us.
All right, okay, Niko. Thank you, Niko. And we'd like to invite everyone, Niko, and also Emily, and also Kayla, for those who would like to join us at the podium. And then we have an accommodation for all of you, and the family as well, certainly. I know, right? That's a great way to set up Thanksgiving. We just celebrated a ninety-five-year-old veteran, and now we're celebrating our youth. That's just, that's just a way to wait to, you know, get ready for Thanksgiving. That's excellent. So, with that, I'd like to begin with our agenda overview and staff briefing, and with calendar events and reports and bills and claims. City Manager, would you please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening to you, members of the City Council. Tom Williams, City Manager. And as we get started, first and foremost, I would like to just wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving this Thursday. So, next slide, please. Street sweeping has been going on for a long time in Millbrae, and as all of you know and the residents out there, that they never really know when their street is supposed to be swept. And we don't have signs to have people move their vehicles. So, we're unveiling this great tool that allows people to just simply type in their address and find out when and what days their streets will be swept, and the times to voluntarily move their vehicle, so the street sweeper can come by. And so, we have a window of about three hours, two to three hours, depending on the neighborhood. But simply, this is accessible, kind of like our Find My District, same program. And Eduardo Gonzalez is just gonna show you how it works. So, simply just type in an address. I'll type in City Hall address here. And the information will pop up. And Eduardo, would you mind reading that? And this is, sorry, I wear glasses, but I can't read it from here. So, I'm gonna have him read it.
Certainly, City Manager. So, when you type in the address, there's some information, including the APN number. You also have the address, the sweep day and time. So, in this particular case, for 621 Magnolia Avenue, it says, "Street sweeping for this area is conducted on the first and third Wednesday of the month between 9:00 AM and 12:00 PM." Also, it has car instructions. So, here it says, "Please park your vehicle in your driveway or at an alternate location during these hours," so the street sweeper can clean the area.
Thank you, Eduardo. And you know, Mayor, the thing is, people sometimes ask, you know, well, why can't people get a ticket, that type of thing? And under the California Vehicle Code, we would have to install signs, about one sign every fifteen or twenty feet in neighborhoods. So, the neighborhoods would be littered with street sweeping signs. And, you know, this is a good alternative, that hopefully education and people can voluntarily look up the days and hours of which their street will be swept. So, we're unveiling this, first time tonight, and will be available to the public starting tomorrow. And so, hopefully, people can get their streets a little bit cleaner.
Perfect. Bring excellent changes every bit of the way, getting ready for the new year.
All right, Mr. Eduardo, next slide, please. Want to just briefly update the City Council on the redevelopment of the Marina Vista Park. This is over in the neighborhood east of Monterey Street. And we had the great ribbon cutting with our partnership with both Assembly Member Pappin and State Senator Becker, providing some funding and partnership with the city. We will be unveiling this park and have a ribbon cutting end of January, early February, but you can see the progress that's happening. You've got the play structures on the top left. That middle picture, that green, is a drinking fountain, so it's a pet drinking fountain as well as a human drinking fountain. Our very first covered barbecue facility and picnic facility on the bottom-left photo, you can see the shade structure that's there, a grass field, and amenities that were, through a survey of the neighborhood and the city, these are the amenities that were the top priority. So, it's a great-looking park. I'm really proud of this, and we'll have the ribbon cutting here in the next couple of months, but it's coming right along and on schedule. So, I just wanted to share that with the City Council. Also
Sorry.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
There's no sound at home. Somebody just reported.
Right, so we'll look to MCTV.
Well, you're getting sound, but people at home are not for some reason. So, if we could just double-check that. Sorry to interrupt, my apologies.
Yep, no problem.
All right, go ahead, continue, City Manager.
So, in everyone's mail and available online is our new winter program. Registration is now open. We've got terrific classes from dancing and exercise to arts and crafts at all age groups, from elementary school, preschool, through senior programs. So, we just unveiled this. It's available on our website under our Recreation Department. You can also sign up on our bit.ly/millrec, but a lot of great programs this winter. So, next slide. All right, it's fixed. Also, we just want to let everybody know how to stay informed, especially this time of year, when the weather and rain come up, you know, people wonder, you know, how do I get informed, what numbers do I call? So, we have a series of information outlets. On the very bottom, the bit.ly/millsstormready is the address. You type that into your phone or your computer, these three things will pop up. So, on the top, City of Millbrae Notify Me, you can sign up for that. Every notification that the city releases will be into your email or text message. Number two is SMC Alert, that's through the county. This alerts you of all emergencies and street circulation, traffic, you know, anything and everything on an emergency service basis. And then number three is Millbrae Works. This is our See, Click, Fix application that's very popular, becoming even more popular. You have a pothole, graffiti, a tree needs trimmed, or anything, you can sign up on See, Click, Fix, email it in, generates a work order, go to our Public Works Department, Public Works fixes it, you get an email back once the project is been maintained. So, bit.ly/millstormready, go there, you can sign up for all this information. Also has phone numbers for emergency and non-emergency lines as well. Next slide, Mr. Eduardo. And these are the important numbers that when you go to that page will pop up. So, our non-emergency number, 650-363-4951, please call that, unless it's a real emergency, then please call 911. Sandbags, we have a sandbag filling station on Millbrae Avenue between Palm and Hazel. And then power outages, you can log on to the PG&E website or contact the number, that 1-800-number, 745-5000. But all of this will be on the webpage when you go to that millstormready website. In the holiday season coming up, first Saturday in December, which is December 7th this year, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM, there are photos available with the Closets, Santa Claus, Mrs. Claus at the gazebo right off of Library Lane. As I mentioned in previous meetings, it's a great event, really, a lot of people take advantage of it. It is pet-friendly, and so, under the gazebo here on the north side of the library, at the Library Lane, pictures with Mr. and Mrs. Claus, 2:00 to 4:00 PM, December 7th. Also, after that, we have our tree lighting, December 7th here at City Hall, starting at 5:00 o'clock. We've got the string band from Taylor Middle School will be performing, the Scouts, and also various elementary school-aged kids from schools throughout the city of Millbrae will be performing. And then, of course, tree lighting with the MC by the Honorable Mayor Fung that evening. So, come out and join us, it's a great event. We have our old 1929 fire truck that will be delivering the Closets, so it's a fun evening. And then lastly, our movie this month, December 13th, which is a Friday, Millbrae Goes to the Movies indoors at the rec center, starting at 6:30 PM, is Polar Express. So, another great family outing, Friday evening, December 13th. outing, Friday evening, December 13th. So Mayor, that kind of covers everything that's going on. And again, happy Thanksgiving to all of you.
Thank you so much. And this seems like a very busy and yet fun November coming up for all of us. So thank you so much for that update. Next up is approval of minutes. And we have a regular meeting minutes of September 10, 2024. And any council questions or comment on that meeting minute? If not, then I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Anne Schneider. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Nguyen. City clerk, would you please?
Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Riley.
Aye.
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pappin.
Yes.
Mayor Fung.
Aye.
The meeting minutes of September 10, 2024, passed by a vote of 5 to 0.
Thank you so much. And today, we don't have any oral report from city committees and commissions. Chair, that moves us into the Public Communications Section, which this portion of the agenda is reserved for those who wish to comment on any item not appearing on tonight's agenda. However, speaker must address subject matters within the jurisdictions of the city council. Every speaker will have three minutes tonight. The speaker is to address directly to the entire council and not individuals, council members, nor to the public. And we'll start with in-council chamber speaker, and then we'll move on to the virtual attendees. We'll start with Mr. Ken Smith.
My name's Ken Smith, 218 Taylor Boulevard.
Please get close, Mr. Smith, please, there you go.
There you go. It was for a shorter person. So, yeah, first of all, I want to thank the council and for all the hard work that you do every single day, and the city staff for all their hard work. We truly appreciate it as citizens of Millbrae. And I also want to appreciate the sheriffs that are in Millbrae. They do an outstanding job for us on a day-to-day basis. A person who walks their dog twice a day, I see the activity outside, and I definitely see the sheriffs, and I've seen a large improvement. But what I'm here to talk about today is the topic about Kristi Corpus. It's been in the newspaper a lot. It's been on social media a lot. And I guess kind of, as a resident that communicates a lot with our fellow neighbors and things, I felt like it was kind of important that I spoke a little bit about it tonight. And Millbrae's responsibility to this situation. And, you know, we have done a lot of work upholding the democratic process. And so as an elected official, and I'm not saying Kristi Corpus has managed her job well. There's a lot of things that can point to where she's not done a great job. But she's an elected official. And so we should respect the fact that it's a democratic process. If we want to choose as citizens of San Mateo County to recall her, then that's what we should do, and it can be done quickly. I don't have enough information to judge her on the scenarios. The Attorney General, State Attorney General hasn't completed their report, you know? And I don't know if there's been talk behind the scenes that they're going to give her a compensation package. Just don't know any of these facts, right? We all don't know these facts. So for one of the citizens of Millbrae, my recommendation for our city council is hold for a minute, let more information come out before we make a decision on council. That would be my recommendation. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. And I don't have any, that's all the speakers that I have in the chamber. And city clerk, would you please help with the virtual attendees?
Of course, Mayor. Allison, please accept unmute.
Hi, yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great, thank you for taking the time. I live at 62 Albonito Way in Millbrae. And I wanted to bring up a couple concerns associated with the recent approval of a new family home across the street from my house. I was super excited to see earlier in the meeting that you guys put in a new park or redeveloped an existing park. We have, across the street from me, one of the last empty lots in Millbrae. And when it came on the market, I actually called the city manager just to let him know that it was on the market and ask what were the chances it could be made into a park. And the answer I got was it wasn't really on the radar, and that there were no parks planned for my neighborhood. So I'm glad to see you're putting in parks, but I want to know, how do I get one within walking distance of my house that would serve my neighborhood? And also address concerns like space for wildlife and space for water to soak back into the ground, which is a huge issue in our neighborhood on the side of the hill. And when the City Planning Commission allowed that home to be built or approved as approval, a couple other issues came up that I wanted to make sure the city council was aware of. One of which is that the planning commission is not actually taking into account neighborhood, the feedback of the neighbors. They basically are going with the idea that as long as the proposed new structure meets city planning guidelines, then it is approved regardless of what the neighbors say. So despite some concerns, mine included, from the neighborhood, because the home met the guidelines that were on the books, no feedback from the neighbors was taken into consideration. And I don't know if you guys know that that is what is happening, because they allowed us, kind of, they paid us lip service, they allowed us to show up and make comments, but no changes were made in response to the neighborhood's comments. So I wanted to make you aware of that. And then the second problem is that nobody can afford to appeal, because the appeal costs $2,297. So in order for you guys to even have another look at it, somebody would have to have $2,000 around. And I wanted to bring up that is an issue too. So thanks for taking the time to listen to a neighborhood concern. But I am an environmental scientist, and I am really interested in how we preserve some of the last open space that we have in our community, and do things like provide habitat. I've seen coyotes hanging out in that abandoned lot. There's not too many places left for them. And I would super love to see a plan that would allow some open space in my neighborhood. Thanks.
Thank you, Allison. Councilmember Anne Schneider, you have a comment?
I heard environmental scientists, please reach out to me.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just for the benefit of the public, maybe let them know that public comment cannot be responded to because it's not on the agenda. But certainly, you know, as this resident has said, staff is always available for kind of, but just so the public knows that the council cannot comment on items not on the agenda.
Yep, all right. Thank you. So I think that's the conclusion of the public communication this evening. Moving on to consent calendar, we have item number five, receive and file monthly general fund financial report for the period ending October 31st, 2024. Item number six, consideration of a resolution accepting the annual AB 1600 report for the fiscal year 2022 to 2023, and the combined annual and five-year AB 1600 report on the receipt and use of development impact fees for the fiscal years 2023 to 2024. Item seven, adoption of a resolution approving the amended and restated legal surface agreement with the law firm Richard Watson and Gershon, a professional cooperation. Does anyone want to pull any item from the consent calendar? Seeing none. Any public comments? No public comments? And at this point, I'd like to entertain a motion, if anyone would like to make. Any motions? I'll make a motion to approve.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I'm happy to make a motion to approve consent calendar.
Would you like to second my motion?
Happy to.
Thank you so much. City clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Riley.
Aye.
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pappin.
Yes.
Mayor Fung.
Aye.
The consent calendar passed by a vote of 5 to 0.
Thank you so much. And we do not have any items under public hearing today. That takes us to the existing business, which is item number eight. Waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance prohibiting the use of combustion engine, power leaf blowers. And city manager, would you please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce our Director of Engineering and Public Works, Mr. Sam Batista, for the staff presentation.
Director. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and city council members. Happy early Thanksgiving today, or before you, is an ordinance prohibiting the use of combustion engine-powered leaf blowers. Next slide, please. So just to give you some background, in 2021, California passed Assembly Bill 1346 banning the sale of new gas-powered small off-road engines effective in January 2024. Leaf blowers, especially the combustion leaf blowers, belong to this category of small off-road engines. So city council discussed use of the combustion engine-powered leaf blowers on September 24th and November 12th, 2024. Next slide, please. Council directed staff to draft an ordinance to prohibit the use of combustion engine-powered leaf blowers and not any other landscaping equipment. In that draft ordinance, there would be no restrictions on operations of time and no restrictions on the zoning of zone use. So this ordinance will become effective in July 1st, 2025. Next slide, please. So at the November 12th city council meeting, council also discussed the incentives that the city was offering. The city received a $22,000 grant from Peninsula Clean Energy to provide incentives for electrification of landscape equipment. Staff suggests increasing current incentives for households from $100 to $200, and for landscaping businesses with valid Millbrae business licenses from $200 to $400. Next slide, please. So once the ordinance passes, staff will notify residents of the ban via social media and through newsletters. We will also promote the incentive programs to residents and current landscaping companies with the valid city business licenses. And then we will educate the public on proper disposal of their existing combustion engine-powered equipment. Next slide, please. So the recommendation is to waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance prohibiting the use of combustion engine-powered leaf blowers. And that's my short presentation. We'll be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Director. Questions and comments from the council? And then we'll open up to the public, and we can bring it back for more discussion. Anyone? Councilmember Nguyen.
Would there be opportunities to increase the incentives?
Yes, councilmember Nguyen, with your, we recommended doubling, but if you would like to suggest higher limits for these incentives, we are willing to entertain that.
Okay, that's something I think I can stand by if we can increase that.
Great.
Anyone else? Councilmember Anne Schneider.
Thank you for bringing it back. And of course, I support the ordinance. From our discussion a couple of weeks ago about the concern of businesses who may not do this, what if we use the other approach? And I'm trying to figure out what we could do within our own social media. But we could thank the businesses that come forward and have gone all-electric, because this is a big part of climate change. It's not any part of the ordinance, it's just more of probably how we roll it out. I would love to know, I'm probably going to need to be looking for a gardener soon, and high on my list is an all-electric gardener on that. So maybe there's something we can do that is putting the city behind these businesses that have chosen to go green.
That's a great comment, Councilmember Schneider. I know our environmental programs are certifying businesses to be green. So should those landscape businesses come to us, we can probably customize our green business criteria to include, you know, evaluating their business and see if they have electrified landscape equipment.
I think that would be fantastic. And it makes me think that, and I can't remember if we've done this already, but when we're talking about tree trimmers, and I think when we went through the tree ordinance, we were also going to try to make sure that we had certified tree trimmers who know how to take care of our sycamore trees and other city trees. And maybe we can all have that on the same page. I mean, I know who I use is, coincidentally, who the city also uses. So I know, and they've done my trees, and they've done a fabulous job. And we want people who really know what they're doing, working and operating in Millbrae. So we could tie that all into a, hey, here are our great green business programs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comment, questions for our staff? Anyone on my left? No? Okay. Do we have any public comment on this item, city clerk?
We have a public speaker online, and it's Allison. Would you like me to go ahead?
Please do.
Okay. Allison, please go ahead and accept unmute.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm still here. So I figured I'd say something about this. As an environmental scientist, I think this is a great idea. But I would like to see an environmental justice go along with this. Like, a lot of our landscapers don't speak English as a first language, so we make sure that that communication gets out in multiple languages and hits not just big landscaping businesses, but a lot of gardeners are like, you know, one, two-man operations. And to make sure that those little guys aren't hit disproportionately hard by this, quite frankly, I'm not sure. They all have City of Millbrae licenses. But if there's something that you could do to recognize that they are still gardeners, like, I'd hate to see all the small operations be disproportionately hit hard by this. That's it.
Thank you so much for your comment, Allison. Anyone else?
There are no other hands raised online.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the council. Anyone else have a comment? I just want to give those who have not made comment, have a question, have an opportunity, and then we'll come back. Anyone else? Okay, councilmember Anne Schneider.
Along the lines of, I'm going to ruin her name, Ms. Lundgren, said, "I wonder if part of our outreach program will also go to the residents of Millbrae." And it says something along the lines of, "Hey, could you reach out to, make sure that your gardener knows that we have this program, that we have it in multiple languages, and we can handle her comments by having our residents do that?" And I'm happy to talk to my neighbors who both have landscapers on, I talk to their gardeners all the time, and make sure that they know that this program is available for them.
Great, thank you.
All right. So let's have some questions and I'll have some comment after. Have we reached out to our landscaping business community? And how many of us do we have within the city?
Yes, Mayor. We have not yet reached out to our landscapers that are licensed. There are currently seven landscapers that are licensed here at the City of Millbrae. But, you know, after this is passed, we will definitely, you know, we'll reach out to them. There are seven of them. But then, I'm sure with that, those seven will allow their colleagues to know about this incentive.
So we have not heard from the businesses?
We have not.
Okay. Have we done any social media educational process regarding our rebate program at all? Or I guess we haven't actually enacted our rebate program, right?
So, yes, we have enacted the rebate program, and we like to call them incentives. And so far, we've received three applications for incentives.
Oh, good.
So people are, they know that the incentive is out there. So, you know, hopefully, when we do this social media blast, we hope to get more people involved.
Yeah, just for informational purposes so the public understands, when PCE granted, these $22,000, along with many other cities also has that grant. They've done some outreach to the community and let people know that as part of their surplus funds, earlier this year, over $200 million of surplus funds that they've dedicated into different buckets, and part of it is dedicated for this rebate program, incentive program, for those who want to turn in their gas, power, lawn, equipment, and turn that into electrification. So, you know, that social media campaign and that public outreach has already begun. Therefore, you receive some of those inquiries, although we as a city have not officially begun our incentive program. But the public, at least a good portion of it, is aware of it. And so far, if you may help answer this question, has there been any documented complaint regarding regarding, you know, these gas power equipments? Where does leaf blower, or lawnmower, or any of that stuff in the city?
From the Public Works side, we have not heard any complaints regarding the gas blowers. However, maybe code enforcement might have? So...
Just one?
Just one.
Mr. Mugginsen, if you don't mind? Let me try to rephrase the question. Has there been any documented complaint regarding the use of these gas power equipments?
In the past year, we've had one complaint, and it was related to Green Hills Country Club.
And the resident is close to the Green Hill Country Club? Okay. So somebody who lived by the golf course? And they were using leaf blowers, lawnmowers? Okay, leaf blowers, and then they got a noise complaint as a result? Okay, all right. So I, you know, it's, it's something to consider here, is obviously, we have an important climate goal. I'll, I'll get to it in a second. Obviously, we have an important climate goal that we're trying to achieve here, right? It's to get rid of our reliance on fossil fuel and reduce greenhouse gas emission and also reduce the noise. I, I think here, the discussion here should be about what is the best way to go about achieving these climate goals? Because ultimately, that's what these legislation is intended to address. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I think the mayor's, we, every single neighborhood, there's been complaints about noise, it's just not coming directly to the city. Is that not true? I mean, you, do you want to hear every, should we announce to everybody that they should notify the city about noise? Because, let's be truthful here, that just because one person complained to the city, there's just every single neighborhood, I can tell you right now, complains about their gardeners, the noise from the blowers here. So, yes, staying focused on the environmental impact is why we're here and why we are trying to implement this ordinance to help the process along sooner rather than later. I just wanted to be clear on that.
Thank you for the comment. Councilmember Anne Schneider.
On the subject of complaints, I moved back to Millbrae in 2006 with gardeners on both sides of me. My mom has COPD, my sister has asthma, and then a year and a half ago, I started getting asthma. Every time these gas-powered things go, it triggers an asthma attack, but there was no mechanism to file complaints. And nor did I want to get upset with my neighbors and their landscape companies, because when I've needed them, I've often said, hey, could you help me with this on that? So I think the, the concept of, is there a need based on concepts is just not relevant here. We're talking about both climate change, meaning carbon into the atmosphere, and for those of us who suffer from asthma triggered by the dust that leaf blowers kick up, electric or gas. But gas is worse, it's the gas fumes. I would have to go and close every window in the house because the gas fumes come into the house, and that's what triggers asthma. The particulate matter also, but it's the gas on that. So I would have been complaining all the time had there been a mechanism for that. So again, as the Vice Mayor said, this is climate change, this is real, we're all living through the impacts of climate-changing weather. This is an inexpensive way to really save a lot of carbon from going into the atmosphere. And I look forward to bringing this forward and voting on it. And I'm happy to make a motion when we're ready.
Okay, all right. Thank you for the comment. Sounds like you made a motion, and that's fine. Just wanted to bring about, to the discussion, just kind of refresh our memory, because it came from the last council meeting, and it's shared by Ms. Papajon from the previous council meeting, that based on the experience that, you know, we're learning from Burlingame, which is a neighboring city who enacted this ordinance some time ago, legislation on ordinance to ban the use of these equipments, it, I remember correctly, was hotly enforceable, if I'm not mistaken. And it's not likely to be the best approach to enact an ordinance that is very difficult to enforce. So, you know, I, I think what I'm trying to get at is, we want to focus on the goal that we're trying to achieve with this legislative process, and what's the best way to go about achieving the climate goal that we set out to achieve, which is reduce our reliance on fossil fuel, on these equipments, reduce the noise, and reduce these greenhouse gas emissions. I'll, I'll get to that in a second, Vice Mayor. I got your hand. And so, you know, we need to set ourselves up for success here, is what I'm trying to get at. So, enacting an ordinance that is not enforceable, or hotly enforceable, it's not likely to set ourselves up for success. And I just want to bring about one more thing to this Council, and then we'll get to the Vice Mayor after. Millbrae is now our regional leader in many things that we do in terms of, you know, we're the first cities to have Housing Elements certified, we're the first few cities that have a balanced budget, you know, we're making great strides in housing productions and job creation, focusing on bringing corporate headquarters and life science to our city. We're the first city in Sematell County to have a local density bonus, more than likely, early next year. Millbrae is not a follower, we're a leader. I just want everybody to understand that. So with that said, you know, I, I will say that I'm not a big fan of enacting an ordinance today until we have an opportunity to have a robust educational program, an incentive program that helps to, we'll, we'll get to that, we'll get to that in a second. And focus on a robust educational program through a series of multilingual social media and newsletter and booth and community gathering to promote these incentive program, to ask folks to turn in voluntarily their gas power equipment, so that we can achieve this climate goal in a way that is incentivizing people to, to comply. These, these gas power equipment is no longer available for sale in California. The question there is, how can we get them back sooner rather than later to stop people from using it? And to do so, I like to see us incentivizing folks to do that. We have a grant available. And I also wanted to go a little further, that I think we should extend our incentive program to not only to leaf blowers, but to all gas-powered landscaping equipment, such as lawnmowers, wheat whackers, and et cetera. City Manager, correct me if I'm wrong, the grant that we receive from PCE, it's available to all landscaping equipment that is gas-powered, is that not correct?
Correct, Mayor, anything that would be electric or battery.
So, thank you. So I think, you know, at the end of the day, my consideration there is, what is the best way to go about achieving the result that we all wanted? Which is get rid of greenhouse gas emission, get rid of the noise, get rid of our reliance, or reduce our reliance on these fossil fuel. So I think having an incentive approach rather than carrying a stake, I, I think that's more appropriate from my perspective, and I'd like to see our staff to bring back this information report in about six months' time, after we have an opportunity to have a robust educational and incentive program, to bring it back to the Council to see the effectiveness of this campaign, and then discuss any other possible pathway forward in order to better achieve our climate goal. And we'll go to Vice Mayor, and then we'll come back to Councilmember Schneider after.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I completely disagree with the mayor here. This is, there's not a problem in any enforcement here. As with any ordinance, it comes with education. And I'm confident that our city staff will be capable of getting the message out as they have in the past. When we started with, you know, the banning of plastic bags, polystyrene, I don't think, I do think that six months' delay is actually crippling and defeats the purpose that we're trying to do here. We are not seeking to penalize anyone, but the sooner the ordinance is implemented, and I should, believe it should be done tonight, the sooner we can get the message out, we can actually educate people. And if the mayor is correct here in saying that it applies to all other equipment, I'm not willing to go there, but I think our ordinance should include, either way, if you would like to also trade in or update your lawnmower, that we could reward that as well. But I do think this ordinance, as it applies to the leaf blowers, is very important. It is in line with our neighboring city, which has not expressed any difficulty in implementing the ordinance. And again, this gives us an opportunity to immediately start the education process. And again, the implementation is exactly when? We've given people...
Yes, so the ordinance would become effective on July 1st, 2025.
Correct, which is several months away. So to delay it any further, we'd kick it out a whole nother year. I don't think that's appropriate. I think we should start with the ordinance now, implement our education programming, get it up on the website, press releases, the way we normally do things here. So I think it's very important that we act now, we've had discussions, this is now our second discussion about this. In order to really show our commitment to reducing greenhouse gases, I would, if Councilmember Schneider had made the motion, I would second the motion. We need to lead within our city, and this is how we do it. And again, our staff is not out to get people. We're trying to educate people as to the benefits of this ordinance overall, to work with them, to make it happen, and to provide incentives, I believe that was your preferred word, to whomever would like to take advantage of them. So again, if a second is needed, I hopefully have done that now. Thank you.
Comment?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for the second. In terms of enforcement, and I hate to keep going back the fact that I've worked in the environmental field for a really long time, but I've also followed California Air Resources Board. This all started with a discussion of off-road two-stroke engines, which are gas-powered two-stroke engines, there's a range of products out there, and they're all bad. They're all bad. This is not anything new, the landscapers have worked on this. California Air Resources Board had numerous, numerous outreach to landscape industry, most likely the bigger ones than the smaller ones, especially with the language issue in there. But this is not anything that is going to come as a surprise to anybody in the landscape industry. So I appreciate the Vice Mayor, I appreciate the second. Vice Mayor, would you like to add into this the fact that we would like to see the rebate program also include other gas-powered landscaping equipment? Assuming that we've got the funds for those, because I think that's a great idea?
Well, if the funds apply, but I don't think the implementation, so yes, I would like to offer that if the funds apply here, but I don't want it to really...
Get in the way?
Yes. I would like the city to focus on the gas blowers, but offer that opportunity if it is available funding-wise.
So my question then for the current motion and second, is there enough flexibility and direction to staff that if we're not getting a lot of requests for leaf blower replacement, and somebody comes in with they'd love to get rid of their lawnmower, they could do that? Just, I want to make sure staff has the flexibility, that we trust staff.
Good evening, Councilmembers.
Legal Council?
So the ordinance, as written, it does not include the information on the incentives, that's part of the staff report, which would go to the educational component, but the amount of incentives or the types of incentives that would be offered, it's not actually part of the ordinance itself, so there is some flexibility on that.
Excellent. Okay. And then, final question, I know it was only two weeks ago, but you can tell I'm short-timing it now. I believe the vote was 4-1 last time, and we just simply need a 3-2 to get this moving. I agree. Here's the reality, folks, we have a new president coming in, he is very pro-gas and oil, and that means that all of us that have the power within ourselves to reduce other carbon inputs should be doing everything we should be doing right now, no ifs, ands, or buts on that. So with that, I'm happy to call the vote, unless the other Councilmembers have...
So, yeah, so we got a, we got a motion, and we have a second, and I, what I'd like to do...
If I may, for the, we do not have a formal motion or a formal second.
You want to make a formal motion so that we can...
My motion is to waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance prohibiting the use of combustion engine-powered leaf blowers, and just to be specific, that is gasoline-powered two-stroke engines. Thank you.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion and we have a second. I'd like to make an alternate motion, that I would like to make an alternate motion to pause the enactment of the current ordinance that's stated, but instead, we'll focus on a robust educational program through a series of multilingual social media, newsletter, booth, at community gatherings, to promote the incentive program on new electric landscaping equipment. And I want to make sure that this incentive program to be extended, to include not only the leaf blowers, but also lawnmowers and wheat whackers and all the other gas-powered landscaping equipment. And the goal here, as I said before, is to have a comprehensive incentive approach to speed up the replacements of these gas-powered equipments, and to reduce the noise, reduce greenhouse gas emission throughout the city. And I'd like to ask our staff, as part of this motion, to bring back an informational report on this program in six months, so that the Council can evaluate the effectiveness of this campaign, and to discuss any other possible pathway forward in order to better achieve the climate goal. That's my alternate motion, and I'd like to hear...
Point of clarification?
Yes, please.
Are you assuming that the first motion would not include the educational things you've just stated?
No, I think the motion was clear to waive the first reading, to enact the ordinance, which we also had discussed a moment ago, to include the...
I'm sorry, but...
Let me finish, and then we can come back to you. My understanding was the first motion was to enact the ordinance, correct me if I'm wrong, and to include the incentive program for all the other gas power equipment, is that not correct? Is that, is that your motion, Councilmember?
That is the motion with a reminder that we already talked about the educational program that would roll out over the next seven months.
Educational program on the incentive.
And sir, my question...
Right.
To you, sir?
Yes.
Is that, the first motion includes the education. I mean, that is standard procedure, is it not, for staff to do that? Yes, nodding. Everything the mayor just said would be included in rolling out the first motion. I just wanted clarification on that.
Okay, yes, I understood, so...
But you want to delay it six months?
No, I want to make sure that, i- it's, it's a carry and stake approach. I think, I believe in incentivizing folks to do the right thing, and I want to be able to have an opportunity to ensure that everybody turn in their gas power equipment based on the rebate that we're not, or incentive that we have available, so that we don't necessarily have to tell people what they cannot do, but incentivize them to do the right thing. I think that's the approach that I like to take. And even in six months that we're not effective, then we can find a way to legislate around it, to make sure that people stop using all these equipment now that we have an opportunity to educate. Instead of enacting an ordinance tonight and said, we're going to make sure you stop using all the gas power equipment as quickly as possible. That's my alternate motion. If that's, is that clear? What that motion is about?
If, if what? My, my question to you is, the state law already exists.
Correct.
What we are trying to, so, to your point, when the state law comes in, it's going to happen anyway. What we're trying to do here is ensure a reduction of greenhouse gases sooner than later. And I believe your motion for clarification here is going to not do the same.
No, I disagree. Let me clarify. Correct me if I'm wrong, legal, the state law already banned at the beginning of the year, the sale of all gas-powered landscaping equipment. Is that not correct?
The, the state law prohibits the sale of gas-powered equipment. The difference with this ordinance is it's about the use of the equipment, not the sale of the equipment.
So the gas-powered landscaping equipment is no longer for sale in California.
Correct.
So we're basically talking about asking people to turn in or prohibit the use of the existing gas-power equipment that are out there.
Correct.
That's right. Correct. So, you know, what I'm trying to say here is, I want to have a robust educational program to incentivize them to turn it in through an incentive program, and evaluate it in six months and see how effective they are, rather than banning them outright tonight. That's my alternate motion.
But again, I just want to be clear for the record here. This ordinance does not take effect until July of next year. So the buildup to that is that people can take advantage of it right now, and again, they would get the benefits of it. So, again, you're kicking it out another six months beyond, we, we have a... We, we have a grace period, which is like seven months, eight months in the making, already in this ordinance. So I'm a little confused as to why you want it... And again, everything you said education-wise is already in the first motion. Maybe not technically, but that is standard procedure. Staff is nodding their head. That that happens when we do an ordinance that will take effect not until July of next year. So I'm very confused as to your motion when our, the original motion is basically the same, except we are formally introducing an ordinance that would take effect July of next year. So that's why I'm confused by your motion, because we're just going to, we're doing that exact thing. We are educating, the ordinance goes into play. We are educating the public. Nobody's getting fined until July of next year. The whole education process, bilingual, trilingual, everything is going to happen with passing this motion tonight. And no stick is going to be whacked at anybody until July of next year. So that's my confusion, Mr. Mayor.
So I, I don't have any confusion over my motion, my alternate motion. I understand what you said exactly, word for word. I just want to make sure that I was being clear at the beginning. You know, we've heard from Ms. Papajon from the previous meeting, based on the experience from Burlingame, this legislating an ordinance such as this, which is based on their previous experience, is hard to enforce. And mostly it's noise-driven. And so, you know, and it, getting into a situation where an ordinance is on the bug, where, you know, it's, we, we want to make sure that ordinance is, that we legislate upon to set ourselves up for success and not legislations that it's not enforceable. And we want to make sure that we incentivize people to do the right thing, and I think that's the educational, the educational program and the incentive program is going to do exactly that. So I believe that with a robust program, we can be successful in incentivizing people to turn in their gas-powered equipment and replace them with an electrifying one. I don't think we need to go to the point until proven necessary. So far, we've only got one complaint from the Green Hill Country Club, and that's a commercial use of a leaf blower, correct? Mr. Mokinson?
But again, we've stated staff is not...
I got you.
Residents don't go to staff for that kind of complaint here. If, I mean, literally, if you want me to announce right now to every citizen here, if you have a noise complaint about somebody's blower to call our staff, it's going to be overwhelming. So are we asking staff, "Would you have a problem enforcing this ordinance when it, by July of next year?" Can staff respond to that? Because the mayor is relying on statements from Burlingame. Let's ask our staff.
No, I, I'm relying my statement based on the previous council meet... I'll get to that in a second, I promise. I, I, okay, let me, let me respond, and then I'll go to you. I remember very vividly in the last council meeting, Ms. Papajon stated that was very difficult to enforce, and that was the experience from the city of Burlingame when they enacted, because a lot of these complaints are noise-driven. And by the time the co-enforcement officer came out to that noise complaint, the job is already done. The noise is gone. They stopped using the, the leaf blower, the lawnmower, whatever that might be. So that's creating a difficulty in the enforcement, and it's creating animosity with that. Anyhow, councilmember Anne Schneider.
I'm never the pro, the Roberts Rule's here. We have a motion and a second. We have a motion, an alternate motion, and we've already gone into discussion without a second of that motion.
So, thank you, Councilmember Schneider. So at this point, I would recommend that you call for a second on the mayor's motion.
Yes. See if there's a second, and then we can proceed.
And that, and if so, that vote must be taken first before the previous motion, so...
So...
And also, just to clarify, the first motion by Councilmember Schneider, I think you used the language, it was a motion to enact the ordinance. I believe it should be a motion to introduce the ordinance.
Waive the first reading.
Because it has to go for a second, right. It has to go for a second reading.
Thank you, City, thank you, City. I just read what was on the recommendation on the, there, because I didn't bring my own computer tonight, so I didn't have it in front of me. So I am happy to do the recommendation as written by staff on that. And my hand is still raised. Once we get a second or no second, which makes this discussion... You know what, I'm going to do it now, anyway. I have enforced many environmental laws in my life. If I look at the landscaper next door to me, and come July 1st, he's still using a gas-powered one, which I can smell anywhere in my house, all I have to do is get the name of the company and turn it over. We ask the company if they're still using gas-powered. Boom, done. It is one of the easiest enforcement things within the environmental movement. Two weeks ago, we spent a lot of time discussing a homeowner using a gas-powered device, which is a little bit different than a company. Gas-powered used by a resident means neighbor against neighbor. That wouldn't be my first protocol or my first go at enforcement. It would be with the commercial landscapers. And that is actually very easy to enforce. And in fact, they are incentivized already as a green business in a green industry to go that direction. It really isn't that big of a deal. So again, we're still waiting for a second for your motion.
That's right. So I made an alternate motion, and then I would love to see if anyone wants to second that. Second, okay? This is the second of the alternate motion? Okay. Roberts Rule of Order, would you please, City Clerk? Okay, all right.
This is something, I mean, let's be real. Vice Mayor and I, this is our last council meeting. We have been trying to get this through for many, many months. It was delayed and pushed back many, many months. It would be nice to let the Vice Mayor and I go out with yet one more environmental win for the people of Millbrae.
Councilmember Nguyen?
No.
So this is the alternate mo, this is the alternate motion that you second, correct?
Okay, second.
Yeah, you seconded.
You already seconded. This is the roll call.
Yes.
Hold on, hold, hold on. Yes, we're trying to help.
At this point, there's been a motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Nguyen, and now we call for the vote.
Correct.
It's on the mayor's motion.
It's, Councilmember Nguyen, let me just be clear for the clarity, for the clarity of the public. You are now voting on the alternate motion that I made.
Aye.
Councilmember Riley?
I asked one question before, say yes or no?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Ask a question, go ahead, please.
Sure. So for example, if you found someone still uses the gas blower after July, and we all know it's harder to enforce, what are we going to do? Either fine for them, or what are we going to do?
So your question is, what is the enforcement?
Yeah, yeah, because we all know it's harder to enforce.
So...
Well, I'm sorry, has the record been set? Is it hard to enforce or not? I mean, the mayor has come up with this assumption based on Ms. Pettijohn, who's not here.
So I think it was pretty clear in the last council meeting that Ms. Papajon had presented it, that it was, she stated in her word that enforcement was very difficult based on the experience from city Burlingame. So, but to answer the question from Councilmember Riley, your question was, if I, if I may, if I may reread your question, is what is the enforcement mechanism and the remedy? Or not remedy. What is the, what is the, what, what penalty?
Yes.
Are they going to receive?
For the fine for them.
If they were fined or caught using gas equipment if we enacted such a ban, correct?
Right.
Mr. Mokinson, if you can help answer that, we'll get to you in a second.
We, we have those penalties already identified in the municipal code, so we would follow the same standard procedure that we would for any code enforcement penalty. Notice a violation followed by a citation with a fine.
So like a ticket?
Yeah, that's right. And that's already enshrined, and it applies universally, no matter what the, whatever the incident is.
So in essence, it's a ticket with a fine that someone would need to pay if they were caught violating our city ordinance. Does that answer your question?
Yes, how much you want to talk about?
It's a, I think it starts at 50, and it's a graduated scale, depending on first, second, third.
Do you think they're going to increase our residents' charge for, for example, I cut your grass for $50, because this ordinance, then they're going to charge you 75 or $100? Make it difficult to do business in here?
Well, if I can, so we would enforce whatever the law, we would enforce the municipal code as adopted by the city council. Mr. Mokinson's correct. First, we'd give a warning, then we'd come back and give a citation, administrative citation, which would be $50. After that, then it goes up to $100, then I believe $200 up to 500, ultimately up to $1,000 we would maximize. We would, we max out at $1,000. But there's an elevated, you know, evolution of the, of the fine process. First offense, second offense.
Okay, so...
So it starts at 50, goes to 100, 200.
You get a warning, you just said, too.
So just point of order here, Ms. Councilmember Schneider. So we're beginning voting, and she had a question before her vote. So do we allow a... The response to her... Okay, all right, go ahead.
Councilman Riley, we're looking at, at the current, the first motion provides all of that education time before even a warning would go out with a long, big education. This is pretty much standard, how environmental laws are ruled out on that. The second motion is to push all of that back another six or seven months, and then it will have to come back to a new city council and basically starting all over again at that point. So the question is, do you believe, do we believe that it is to our human and our planet's best interest to do it now or later? And I know how you voted two weeks ago.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, and, and I understand the, the conversation, but I do believe procedure and process is important.
Absolutely.
And so when somebody makes a motion, there's a second. That's the time to have the discussion. When the discussion is over and you call for a vote, it's done. You have to make a decision, yes, no, or abstain.
That's correct.
Right. According to your councilmember protocols, once the matter has been fully discussed and the mayor calls for the vote, no further discussion can take place on the matter. However, councilmembers may be allowed to explain their vote. That is the limitation.
All right. So, Councilmember Nguyen voted, and now the roll call to Councilmember Riley, correct?
That's correct, so we're just waiting for it to come from a...
And you're voting on the alternate motion that I made, that is seconded by Councilmember Nguyen.
So I voted those postponed to six months, right?
My motion is to not enact an ordinance tonight, but to have a very robust multilingual educational newsletter and incentive program to encourage everyone in our city to turn in their gas-powered landscaping equipments. The first motion made by Councilmember Anne Schneider and seconded by the Vice Mayor was, would, to have that same education, if you don't mind, is to have the same educational program and the incentive program, except they want to make sure they legislate tonight to have a ban so that no one can use these equipment beginning July 1st?
Correct, Mayor.
The ban would not go in effect till July.
Right. So the ban will take effect on the 1st of July, and anyone who uses these gas-powered equipment on 1st of July will get warning and then tickets and so on and so forth. So those are, that's the difference between the two motions. And you're voting on the one that has no legislation tonight, but only the incentive and the education. And how do you vote?
Okay, I voted no.
So then the Melchun...
Move on.
She voted no.
She voted no, and then we need to continue the roll call.
Yes. Councilmember Snyder?
No.
Vice Mayor Pappan?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so, yes.
Okay, the motion fails.
Okay, the mo, so the alternate motion fails, and now we go back to the first original motion, which is to let, which is to enact the ordinance or waive the first, introduce the ordinance and waive the first reading tonight, correct? City Clerk, would you please?
Okay, this is for the original motion.
Correct.
Councilmember Nguyen?
No.
Councilmember Riley?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Snyder?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Pappan?
Yes.
Mayor Feng?
No.
Okay. Waive the first reading, the city council waived the first reading and introduced the ordinance prohibiting the use of combustion-engine-powered leaf blower, passed by a vote of 3-2-2 with Councilmember Nguyen and also Mayor Feng dissenting.
Thank you so much. And presentation, item number nine, the presentation on California Voters Rights Act and analysis of options regarding requests to transition from district elections to at-large elections for selections of city councilmember. City Manager, would you please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This item follows the city council protocols where any member of the city council can request that any item be placed on the agenda. So following that protocol, this item was requested by a councilmember to place on the agenda for discussion. Staff has, has presented its report. There's been a legal analysis, and we are here to answer any questions.
Okay, so Vice Mayor Pappan and Councilmember Schneider, we'll get to second, let me finish. And then to request an item to be put on the agenda, Vice Mayor, go ahead, please.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I'm, I'm happy for the Vice Mayor to go first. I do have my own semi-presentation. Please go, because I know...
Would you like to go first, or would you like to defer to Councilmember Schneider?
No, 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 I'm happy to go first. So again, this is for the benefit of the public here because we realize the district elections in Millbrae have been nothing but divisive. They have shown everything as to why the Voters Rights Act does not work in a small city. Cutting up a city of 3.2 square miles in five pieces, again, has been divisive. We have shown that it's difficult to get candidates to run in districts. It takes away the choice of the voters by limiting them to just voting to whomever steps up in a district. It is easy to recall people when you have small districts. So it really has not benefited the city in any way, shape, or form. And in addition to that, in the first cycle of this districts, one of the protected class members was not re-elected. So it kind of had the counteractive, or no benefit whatsoever here. It kind of damaged what it was intended to do. The recent case of Pico versus City of Santa Monica went to the, let me see, thank you, by the way, Elaine, for including this, went to the California Supreme Court. And it was kicked back to the lower court with specifics as to how the lower court should evaluate this. What was pointed out by the Supreme Court is that every jurisdiction is unique and should be judged as such. We are not the city of Santa Monica. Again, what has happened in Millbrae shows why the Voters Rights Act doesn't work on smaller cities with smaller populations. It also says it changed the burden of proof. So when we originally went to districts, we were, received a threatening letter from Mr. Shankman saying, "If you don't go to districts, I will sue you." He comes out with a set amount of money every time he sends out one of those letters. So it's kind of a niche industry where he makes money on this. He is still fighting the Santa Monica case to the tune of millions of dollars. Again, what was pointed out in the Supreme Court decision is that now Mr. Shankman and any attorney who takes this on has to prove that the Voters Rights Act was violated in Millbrae. I believe we can clearly show it has never been violated in Millbrae. And again, it doesn't work in smaller cities. Now, we have learned through all the research from legal counsel and everyone else that the Voters Rights Act does not address, has not addressed, does not include how cities go back to at-large elections. So it's not in the law. So that would mean... So that would mean that it's untested. The city of Millbrae could be the test case here. But we want the residents to know it is a possibility. And we also want the residents to know, and I think the benefit of tonight, is that Senator Becker is looking to amend the Voters Rights Act presently. We can help with that by this council actually writing a letter explaining how it does not work in smaller cities. So if he is able to amend the law, then Millbrae could actually, without fear of any litigation, go back to citywide elections where the voters have the greatest choice. They can pick from whomever is running in whatever part of the city. Uh, and I think our voters have shown they would appreciate that much more so, because we've also had two elections where nobody has run except one candidate, and that limits the rights of the people just in that district. So this is why we brought this back. Now, whatever we do tonight will not even come to fruition until the next election, which is two years from now. So the benefit of tonight, if we can reach some consensus here, is to actually write to Senator Becker, asking him to pursue his legislation and point out why the Voters Rights Act in its current form does not benefit smaller cities, um, geographically and population-wise. So that is why we are here. I'm sorry that, um, you know, the, the report from, uh, council kind of suggests that, you know, there's no path forward. There is a path forward. And again, this is something that would happen within the next two years. So we are not taking, you know, decide tonight to do away with districts. I hope that we will decide tonight to send a letter to Senator Becker requesting that he actively pursue his legislation, that we help him pursue his legislation, that districts don't work in small cities for all the reasons, everything that's happened in Millbrae, and that he is successful with his legislation within the year so that for the 2026 election, Millbrae has an open door. This council, whoever the council is, will be able to decide at that point in time. They can do away with all the districts so that the next election, it's open to everybody. Thank you.
So just want to be clear, um, Vice Mayor, what you're asking this council to act tonight is to send a letter to Senator Becker to advocate for new legislation for smaller cities such as us to go back to at-large. Is that correct?
Senator Becker is in the process of doing that. I am asking us to support that effort, sending him a letter. I'm also, the purpose of bringing this was to show our public there is a path forward. The safest way to do that is to start this process. And hopefully, the senator is successful so that the council next year can actually make the decision for the 2026 election. That's when, um, I think two seats will be available. Those candidates would have to run citywide, um, so that all of Millbrae residents would have a say in who serves on the council, and we would go back to the way it was. And I think, again, I'm, my hope is that that would unite the city because districts have been nothing but divisive. That would be my goal, but open to discussion.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Anne Schneider?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. That's, that's a lot along the lines that I went with. A little bit of history on the California Voting Rights Act. It is one size fit all. It looked at big cities like Los Angeles or the Board of Supervisors for San Francisco, for example. It's looking at very big things. It doesn't, and it does say that we're all the same, and we're not. Um, CVRA was also based on race, and it's not based on socioeconomics. What I see happening, especially in Millbrae, is if you have enough money, you can run. If you don't, you can't, or depending on where your location is. That's something that's not in CVRA. I hope that if we do send a letter to Senator Becker, which was one of my asks for tonight, just one, that it would include looking at CVRA and what is not working in it. And socioeconomics really should be a better basis than by race. Um, it, um, got that, got that. Vice Mayor's already brought up, if we look at this election cycle alone, at three other, uh, if you look at Belmont, an African-American lost to a white male. If you look at Half Moon Bay, a sitting Latinx farm worker, history, very big for Half Moon Bay, lost to a, a white male. And if you look at Millbrae, another Asian has lost to a white male. So if we use these elections and we look countywide, let alone statewide, you will find that CVRA is not achieving its results, which is to get more minority representation into elective bodies. And I hope that the senators', uh, work will investigate what's happening. Since I did attend a workshop on this in Sacramento with other cities around the state, they are finding the same things. And in fact, if we look at Santa Monica, that is the $13 million that has scared everybody about, it's actually going to remove three Latinx representatives and bring, make them a more Caucasian-based city council based on how they would have to draw districts. So again, if the goal of CVRA is minority representation, CVRA is not working. And therefore, the path forward is to modify the law that takes under, into, into understanding and into new language with what's really happening under CVRA. And I agree completely with the Vice Mayor. This was written by a group of attorneys. This is how it was explained to us at CalCities. It was written by a bunch of attorneys who sat in a room and wrote CVRA, knowing that they would have a new way to profit from this. But our legislators in Sacramento are afraid to touch it. So the letter is one way to get there. The other way to get there, and this is the number one issue that I heard from residents in Millbrae during this last election cycle, is they don't like districts. They simply don't. They don't understand. I wanted to look at the candidate statements for people who weren't in District 3, and I had to go online to go find that. We, and yet, we all are supposed to represent all of you, and yet, we don't know what everybody is standing for on that. And I believe that there are two approaches here. The number one approach is a letter to Senator Becker and our other elected officials, at least here in San Mateo County, saying, we need you to modify CVRA. But the second approach is to bring this as a referendum or a measure, I'm not sure the right legal mechanism, to the vote of the people of Millbrae, put it on the special election in March, let the people vote on whether or not they have districts. It wouldn't change CVRA, but it would certainly tell the electeds in Sacramento where the major, what I believe is the majority of the people in Millbrae who do not like districts for a range of reasons on that. So I, I'm all fully in support of writing a letter, but I would also like us to discuss putting on a city referendum, because the third option is the city can choose to get rid of districts, but that's not clear. And that's that test that we have to debate whether we want to be a test of. So the third, first one is letter. Second one is a local measure and get this, get where our residents, where our voters feel on this. And the third would be, and I'm not recommending that tonight, that we choose to go to citywide elections right now as a city council decision. Yeah, I'm not saying, I'm looking at, at Vice Mayor. I'm not saying that tonight, but that is the third option. And we're leaving that third option to the new city council on that. So the letter and whether or not we put a measure on the, um, March slash February election is something we can talk about tonight. Thank you.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is, um, there are two, um, initiative that, well, there are two things that you're asking this council to act on. The first action you want us to take is to send a letter to the legislature supporting a new legislations to be introduced and enacted to allow city of a certain size?
Yeah, to exempt cities of certain size.
Right, to exempt city of certain size from CVRA. Is that what you're asking us to act on? Okay, I, I guess we need to somehow be a little bit more precise on what we're asking this council to discuss and act on. Um, and then I guess we could decide on what the population threshold is.
If I might?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I think we leave that to the senator to negotiate. You know, I think he was starting at like, something like a population of 70,000, 75,000. And I, I'm sure by the time he gets down to our arena, which is like 21,000, that would, I mean, I, I don't think our letter should be that specific, but I would say small, cities of smaller population and geographic size, um, should be exempt.
Okay, so basically.
Let's leave it to him, not try to.
So, okay, so I just want to clarify, and then we'll let you comment on it. How's that? So basically, what you're asking is a letter to support the senator on his proposed legislation. And it depends, and the detail, you leave it up to the senator in terms of negotiation within his committees?
Yes, stating why in its current state didn't work.
Okay, all right. So that's, that's what you're asking this council to act on. You want to have a clarification?
Within California, the definition of cities, small, medium, and large are based by population. 49,999 is considered a small city. The original concept that I heard Senator Becker working on last spring, which is when I tried to bring this to an open discussion, was at 40,000. When I've talked to other people here in San Mateo County of cities between 40 and 50,000, like San Bruno, they're like, no, we want, we want this too. We want to have, we want to remove the risk of some attorney making money just by sending a letter to a city on that. But there is a definition in California of small city. But then there's geography. You can be a small city with a big geographical region that may make sense. I'm not saying it does, but it may. And then you've got a small city like ours, um, geographically, that it's just hard to get, get a good pool of candidates so that the voters have choice.
Again, I think we should be as open as we possibly can, clearly stating why it doesn't work for a city of our size. That's population and geographic. And just leave it to the senators to try to do the best he can. If, what you say is, I mean, those are the, that to be decided at the state level. But we need to, I think it would benefit our city, most importantly, to get a letter to him emphasizing why it doesn't currently work and why we encourage his efforts to change the legislation.
Okay, all right. Um, let's go to other council members and see if they have any questions or comments. Anyone? Councilmember Nguyen?
So this is a question about the, uh, Santa Monica. So we, I'm seeing here 13 million. Do we have an estimate of, let's say, we do go forward with this, how much it would cost us to, in legal fees?
Well, we're not going there right now. We're not.
A letter would not cost us any legal fees.
So, so let me just try to clarify, if perhaps can staff can also do so. What the Vice Mayor is asking tonight is for us to send a letter to support the senator's pending legislation effort to modify CVRA so that city of, of certain size, we have to determine that later, what that size is, uh, could be exempt from CVRA. And that is a legislative lobbying effort. That would not put us in a legal dilemma where Kevin Shankman can come back and sue us for a CVRA violation, which would open up a city to a major legal liability. Just lobbying for a new legislation would not open us up for that.
Okay, understood. I don't have a question then.
Okay, does that answer your question? Okay. Anyone else? Okay, um, so I.
Legal counsel.
Oh, yeah, okay, please.
Thank you.
Laurie, go ahead.
So as the agenda is written, this is a presentation and an analysis of options.
Right.
Um, it's not an, an item where the, the council can take action at this meeting to direct the writing of a, a letter.
Uh, I believe it's an action item, um, for an action that we chose to.
It's an action item. Um, however, the, the way that the agenda is drafted, it's a, it's, it's a more of, um, a presentation, analysis of options.
Understood.
The way I read it is.
Correct. Um, uh, City Manager, I think you've expressed this before, and you have a very good way to expressing that to the public, but you make it an actionable agenda item in case the council wants to direct the staff to perform a certain task. Is that correct?
That's the way we see it. So if it was an information item, it would be information. It would be notice as such. Um, we noticed this, and, and this is for, for legal counsel, right, coming on new. Um, sometimes there's information items, but we know that during those information items, sometimes the council wants to provide direction, and so we take those and we provide it for action and notice it as such, that there may be an action on the particular item for the public to know.
Thank you for the clarification. Councilmember Schneider?
Golly gosh, I want to have the children back here and the veteran so we can have a feel-good. I have been asking since February for an agenda item to discuss options and take action on options. And it has been frustrating how many times I have asked for this to get back to the same position that now we can't even direct staff to do a letter to Senator Becker, our own senator?
Yes, we can. That's an option. I would like to make that motion.
Okay, so the, it's an action.
I'll second that option.
Is it an, just let me just clarify. Let me just, I just want to make sure I clarified it for the staff. And I thought Mr. City Manager did a pretty good job explaining it. Is that it's an action item on, on item number nine, where the council can direct the staff to perform a certain task, including, perhaps, if that's what the council decides to do, to send a letter in support of the senator's legislative effort? So, and correct? Make that motion?
That, that is my.
Okay, we'll have a sec. Legal.
Mr. Mayor, before we take a vote, I'd like to respond to a couple of the points that the council members made.
Yes.
Uh, so as detailed in the staff report, um, the city attorney's office has analyzed the PICO decision, and we do not believe that it has a path forward towards reverting from district elections to at-large elections. That decision arose in the context of, um, the city of Santa Monica, where they had at-large elections, and they did not yet change to district elections. So the context was slightly different. Um, there is no case law, um, that provides a path backwards, so to speak. So as we stated, this would be a case of first impression, um, which would then entail significant legal risk and unknown attorney's fees. Um, so I just want to clarify that the, there was a statement by the Vice Mayor that, that the PICO decision provided a path forward, and the city attorney's office does not believe that is the case in analyzing the PICO decision and other case law.
And I, I will disagree with counsel. Counsel has clearly stated it's just not there. So it, there is no law either way. So a path could be, we're not asking for a path right now. But since the law is unclear, then it is open to interpretation. You can take one path or the other. It doesn't prohibit you, but nor does it set the standard for doing so.
It's uncharted territory.
Exactly, that's my point. So.
Also, with respect to the potential legislation by Senator Becker's office, um, we would recommend monitoring that legislation and then reconsidering it at a future meeting because the PICO decision right now has been remanded to the, um, state court, um, or to the, to the lowest level of the court, and so that, that decision is still being monitored. Um, but whatever happens, um, in the PICO decision could potentially have an impact on any legislation that gets enacted. So we would recommend, um, monitoring the legislation as well as the PICO decision before making any changes to the election status here.
Thank you for the recommendation, Legal Counsel.
And may I address it?
We, we will. And then we'll get a hand raised from Councilmember Schneider, and we'll come back to you. And I have something to say on that, too. Go ahead.
I think I'm in line with the Vice Mayor. Again, I come from a field that has an awful lot of laws, and every law that is written, usually when it's enacted, you find problems with it, whether that's the California Bottle Bill, AB 939 that set up all of our recycling programs, or any of the subsequent recycling laws. Every one of them gets modified over time. They get modified by listening to the people who are implementing those laws. CVRA is implemented at the local government level, special districts, supervisory, city councils, town councils. It is, it is well within our ability. It is, it is well within our ability as a city council, our ability as a city, to say, this is what we're seeing is not working. And we want our Assembly members and Senators to recognize that these things are not doing what the law itself is written to achieve and to fix those. In my field, we call it fix-it legislation. Happens every year. We still haven't fixed the Bottle Bill 30, 40 years later, but we fix it all the time. We don't wait to see how some legal case is going to come out. You go forward with what has to be fixed in the law. And in one of the fixes is, when you are a small jurisdiction, it is not achieving the goals of CVRA. Whether that, that has nothing to do with what happens with PICO versus Santa Monica. That's going to do what it's going to do. Santa Monica is over 100,000 people. It's not going to impact us. Well, it's not going to impact us if we go our own direction, looking at small cities by population or geography. I think we can clearly go forward on recommending to our legislators that this is what's not working, this is what we need fixed so that we can run efficient local elections that give our voters choice.
Okay, all right. So I'll, I'll come to you in a second, Vice Mayor. Legal. Thank you. Told you that's going to be a busy evening. So I just want to, point of clarification for this council as well as for the public, right? So has there been any legislation since recently that substantively changed CVRA to allow flexibility to change from district back to at-large at all currently?
No, we are not aware of any such legislation.
Okay. So based on the current legislation pertaining to CVRA, is there any legal pathway for Milbrae to adopt any legal ordinances, whether it is by this council or by referendum, that would go back from, that would go from district back to at-large election citywide?
There's no precedent for doing so.
Okay. So obviously, it sounds like there is no legal pathway, if I'm correct, hearing you correctly.
That is our conclusion.
That's your conclusion, that there is no legal pathway to go back from, from district back to at-large currently, unless and until new legislation come forth?
By saying there's no legal pathway, we're saying that it's a case of first impression. So there's no other cities that have gone back from district to at-large.
Okay.
I mean, there is a legal, there's a mechanism to do it, but we don't know if it's legal under the CVRA.
So the legality of that action is.
There is no legality.
Correct. It would be a case of first impression.
Okay, all right. Vice Mayor.
Okay, being the only attorney up here, Legal Counsel has presented an opinion. This council does not have to agree with that opinion. So I don't believe it's appropriate to wait for Santa Monica. I believe it's appropriate for us to work with our legislators as it is their job to, as noted, amend legislation. That's what they do. So the PICO case is, again, what is said in PICO clearly from the Supreme Court is that every city is different. So no matter what they do in the lower court now, it's like, we are showing Milbrae is very different, and it didn't work here. So us writing a letter supporting our legislator, our Senator, in his efforts to correct an error, I think, in the previous reiteration of the Voters' Rights Act is appropriate. We stand no legal challenge to any of that. This is our right to free speech. This is our right to work with our elected members of the legislature to make things better.
Right.
So we lose nothing by, again, I've made a motion to write the letter and to work with our Senator. I think, do we get a second?
So, yep, so let me clarify, and, and I'll be happy to go through the vote after. But what I wanted to know is, do we have the detail of the proposed modification on those legislation from the Senator at all?
I will tell you what the Senator is working on.
Okay.
The Senator is closely watching Milbrae. His staff believes, as we believe, that smaller cities should be exempt from the legislation. We are helping that process. His staff also is working on the fact that under the current legislation, cities have a very small window of opportunity to respond to threats from people like Mr. Shankman. So he is looking to extend the response period.
Okay.
So these are the things that he is evaluating and as he is shaping his legislation.
Do we have a Senate bill number or?
No, we don't have one yet.
We don't, no.
I have confirmation. He's proceeding with legislation. There is no Senate number yet.
Okay, all right. So I, look, I'm, I'm more than happy to work with our legislators, Senators, Assembly members, to bring about legislation that enables Milbrae to be better represented.
Yeah. That's why we're writing a letter.
Right. So writing a letter in support of our legislator, I think I, I would be more than happy to support that.
Call for the question.
That does not open up the city to a major lawsuit, and working with the legislator is just a part of the advocacy that we do as a jurisdiction. And I'm more than happy to support our Senator on that. So we have a motion from, just, but public, we don't have any hand raised online, and I don't have any speaker slip. See, would you please confirm that?
Mayor Feng, Maureen Davis just raised her hand.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, please.
All right. Maureen, please accept the mute.
Hi there. I just want to say that I wholeheartedly support the idea of sending a letter to Senator Becker to support his legislative. Milbrae has seen district elections, they've divided us. District elections have promoted disengagement. I mean, we only get to vote once every four years for one seat, and district elections have basically disenfranchised the voters. We don't have much of a voice, no significant voice in who our leadership is. So any action that this council can take to move us away from district elections would benefit our community. The letter is a first step, that's great. There was also mention of the potential of a referendum in March. Even if that's not binding, if it's, if, we had a referendum in March to get the voice of the voters in Milbrae to say whether or not they like district elections, I would support that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So.
Call for the question.
Okay, so just to clarify, the motion is to send a letter to Senator Becker to support his pending legislation in modifying CVRA, correct?
No, the letter would specifically state why CVRA, it is to support his legislation, legislative efforts, and to specifically state why CVRA in its current statute does not work in cities like Milbrae. And listing all the different things that were said tonight, and Planning Commissioner Davis pointed out another one, too, about you only get every four years to vote from your district. So just add it to the list.
Got it, okay. Comments?
Mine's just a, a process question. I agree with everything the Vice Mayor said. I've got my own list of things. Would the letter go out under all five of our signatures?
Well, it's what we're taking a vote for right now.
So the letter would go out with all five? We'd all get to see a draft beforehand? We've only got three weeks to do that.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may.
Please.
And I'll, I'll look to Legal Counsel. If you do it that way, there could be a Brown Act violation. So if you can direct staff to draft it, or if all five of you want to sign it, we'd have to bring it back in a public, open forum that you would all agree and direct.
Okay.
Okay.
I believe.
That's correct.
Yeah. So we can't, we can't draft a letter, talk to each of you, see if you're okay with it. We'd have to be in a notice meeting.
So perhaps one way to go about it is to have the staff take the first draft based on the comment given tonight. Everything's on tape. And then you provide a draft, and then we'll bring it back on the next meeting, and then we can adopt that letter. Everybody can sign it. If that's, is that reasonable?
Yeah, and I think i- if appropriate, I mean, in case staff missed anything I said, I think I've covered all the points, and I'd be happy to make sure those points are included here as to what's happened in Milbrae so far. Ms. Davis just added another one. So just, I want to make sure that all those things are in there, which, or I can go over them like right now.
So a friendly amendment would be to have, to direct the staff to bring back a draft letter for the next meeting for this council to adopt.
Yeah. And I just wanted to make sure they included all the points that, why it's wrong here.
That the person who seconded that?
Yeah, I'm happy with that. I, I forgot about the Brown Act. Thank you for that. But I'll send you my comments, too, which look a little bit beyond Milbrae. This is universal, the problem.
Yeah, so have all the council members send the staff, the City Manager, with the comment that they like to be included in that draft letter. Right? Reasonable? All right, please call the vote.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Hi.
Councilmember Riley.
Hi.
Councilmember Schneider.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Pavan.
Yes.
Mayor Feng.
Aye.
The City Council directed staff to drive a letter in support of Senator Becker's efforts to change the legislation on the CVRA and asked staff to state why CVRA does not work for a city like Milbrae, to bring it back to the City Council on December 10th City Council meeting, passed by a vote of 5-0.
That letter would also encourage the Senator to proceed with his legislation.
That would be your comment to the staff? So you have something we just talked about?
Well, that was part one. Part two is, and this is my question for staff, because I really don't know how to do this, other than to say thank you for everybody that voted for Measure FF. Would a referendum, can you do a non-binding referendum that also helps provide support for Senator Becker as he works with the other legislators in Sacramento? What is the mechanism? Is it a referendum? Is it a measure?
I'm sorry, can you clarify what you're asking in the referendum?
If we went to the people of Milbrae, there are two options. The people of Milbrae can go and collect signatures, or this City Council, or a future City Council in a very short timeframe for March, could choose to put a action on the March primary election agenda, or the March special election agenda. The question is, is it a referendum? I think as, as Planning Commissioner Davis said, I, I just, I'm just asking a question. Would it be a binding referendum, a non-binding referendum? It depends on how it might be written, as to whether it's binding or not. If it just says, we, the people of Milbrae, believe that district elections have not been good for us, boom, it doesn't really have any legal bearing. It just gets a, a very strong measure of where our people stand on districts. That's a, that's my idea of what a, a concept of what a referendum is versus a measure that says Milbrae will revert to district elections in the November general election of 2026. And I'm not saying that, I'm just curious, what are the two?
So, so a couple of things, Mayor, if I may, real quick.
It's the City Manager.
So a measure is a local item that's placed on the ballot for the voters to.
Extension of term.
Right to a question. A referendum is if somebody presents something to you as the legislative elect, the body that makes local laws. If you do not do that, or you do, or you enact something that people disagree with, then they can do a referendum through the signature process and put something on the ballot as, as voters. So anybody can place a, any council can place a measure on the ballot? You don't have to go get the signatures, you have the authority to do that.
Any council member can do that?
No, a council is a body as a whole, a majority.
Okay.
And a referendum is when somebody says, hey, I don't like the legislation that a local city council adopted, therefore I'm going to go get signatures of registered voters and place it on the ballot and, and not go through the local municipality, not go through the local city council to legislate. If, if what you're discussing, I mean, there's advisory votes, if that's what you're looking for, but I would recommend not spending the money and time for an advisory vote, or we can just do that via survey instruments and, and other things, because it would be costly. So a measure would be, you know, we want all homes to be painted blue. And if a majority of the voters agree, then all homes would be painted blue. If, if the council adopted a, a law that said, no, all homes need to be painted red, people didn't like that, then they could get signatures and do a referendum and say, no, we think they should all be painted blue and go around the city council at the ballot box.
Okay.
But I think that that's, I think we're confusing it. I think what you're asking is a question of where the general public is on this, and I would recommend a.
Poll.
A, a survey, a poll, yeah.
Social media polling would have sufficed the purpose.
Even a scientific polling.
Yeah.
You know, that, that would actually have some scientific results.
Correct. There's something to be done through a special election where there'd be huge costs involved.
Yeah, there'd be significant costs.
Especially if it's non-binding.
Correct.
And the Vice Mayor have something?
Yeah, so I think we have to be clear, too. We have been clear that there is no law setting forth cities or in districts going to, back to at-large. There's none. So if the residents did an initiative, would there be any, would there be a legal impact to that? Would the city be exposed to potential litigation or threats? Because right now, it's a threat from Mr. Shankman. And again, that's, his threats are questionable, too, because as I've noted, the Supreme Court has said every jurisdiction is different. He would have to show, he, Mr. Shankman, would have to show Milbrae violated the Voters' Rights Act, unlike the last time. He didn't have to show anything. So I'm just wondering if the public took it upon themselves to do something and they actually got it passed. What, would there be an exposure to the city legally if we know or research needs to be done?
We would need to research this, but if there were a referendum, as you suggest, by the, by the voters, and then it caused the, the districting to change or to go back to at-large, it's likely that it would subject the city to legal risk because it would place the city back to the same status that it was at before making the change.
I think you should look into that more clearly, because I'm not sure that it would. I, I'm just asking because we would.
I think we need to research.
Research would have to be done in order to be clear on that aspect of it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just, just for point of clarification here, and I'll, I'll look to Legal Counsel. If voters take it upon themselves to get signatures, you know, I believe the council's obligated to place it on the ballot.
So if, so if the vote.
Anyway, I think we need to research. I, I have no idea.
So.
I don't either. I don't either.
Let, let's, let's not get ahead of ourselves here. All right, so I'll, I'll get to that in a second. So i- if the citizen goes and collects signature and they want to legislate and they want to enact ordinance by referendum, which is what referendum definition is, is citizen legislation, they can certainly do that. And if they have enough signatures, they, you know, they pass the threshold, a ballot would have, I mean, a ballot measure would have, would have to be put into an election process, and, and the citizen will vote on it. And then if they pass that ordinance, then it will have to stand the test of legal challenge, should they come forward, which we've been told that we will be challenged for it. Now, so the question is whether or not a citizen in Milbrae would do that? That's the question to the citizens of Milbrae. But that's not what we're discussing tonight, right? So I think what Councilmember Schneider asked a moment ago was to say, you know, can we somehow find a way to express what she would think is a overwhelming desire from the citizens of Milbrae to go back from district to at-large and, and to demonstrate the citizen's opinion, which can be done through some kind of a polling or some sort of a social media campaign that would express the will of the people as an advocacy effort.
So Mayor is getting to where I was going.
Can I, can I make one point?
So, can we let her finish, and then we'll let, we'll come back to you? Just a point of order.
It's really one point. It's threat of, threat of litigation. The mayor has said we would be sued. There's a threat of litigation, okay? Just, it's a difference. Thank you.
So when I have been talking to the public, they are ready to have their voices heard. But I appreciate what the City Manager said, that we might be able to do that by a survey. I've also heard that our City Attorney needs to do more research. We're having this discussion here right now because it's going to cost, I don't know if that research will fit within our regular hours on that. Do you need a motion from us right now to direct City Attorney to do more research to find out that if there is a people's initiative, what the impacts would be on the city, should it pass and disagree with CVRA? what the impacts would be on the city, should it pass and disagree with CVRA? That would be the research that would be needed. And then, two, to go ahead with the survey, to go ahead with the survey. The question is, if we're trying to do this, if, I don't know the odd year election cycle, and that would put us, it wouldn't be able to come back again until the primary of 2026, which will be another February-March primary, I think? I think the election schedule, I just don't have it memorized anymore. So the question, the timing of the survey would need to provide direction to the people of Milbury of whether or not they should do a citizen signature on that to make it for the March primary. Does what I say just make sense? There's a bunch of timing issues here that I do not know. And I'm going to be gone in three weeks. So I'll just be a regular old citizen then. And I think that our legislators in Sacramento need to be told, and they need to be given the backup. And the survey might get us there. The survey might show clearly. And then maybe that survey can be replicated in other communities, in San Mateo County and across the state. I will tell you from my work on Cal Cities, this is an issue impacting every county. The cities in every county, they're all feeling that CVRA is bad on that. So what's the best way to do it? And do we need to make a motion? Or can we direct staff on that? So I'm not necessarily pushing for a motion to, for the city to go ahead with a referendum without the information that a survey and the research for, what would the city be held accountable for, should it pass? Those two actions.
So, city manager, correct me if I'm wrong. We've done some extensive legal research on this topic, both from Henson Bridges, which is the former city attorney, and the current city attorney, RWG, on this topic. And you've come up with practically identical conclusion, legal conclusion and a legal opinion as to where we are on whether or not we can currently, based on current legislation, go back from district to at-large. Correct me if I'm wrong, legal.
We did the research on whether, under the CVRA and the PICO decision, there's a path forward back to at-large elections. However, we have not looked at the issue of the referendum, and whether that would have legal repercussions for the city. That's a new issue.
Mr. Mayor, if I-
Yeah.
Maybe I can help here. So really, on this discussion, there's, if you want to change it, right, there's four different processes. One is, the city council can just say, you know, "Vote as an ordinance, we're going to go back to at-large." You can do that. The risks, I think, are self-evident.
Right.
The second one is, you can take it to the voters. The third is, you don't have to take it to the voters, but if there's a group of-
Let the voter come to you.
Let the voters take matters into their own hands.
Correct.
Right? We don't know what, who would be responsible for defending that. Probably the government, you know, the government would be, but I don't know.
That's something we'd have to look into.
We would really have to research that, and that could, you know, take some time. And then, and then fourth is through legislation, right? Senator Becker is changing legislation.
Which we agreed to send a letter to support.
Correct. And in terms of Councilmember Snyder's question, if you're to direct staff, so the reason why this on the agenda is anything under the protocols, more than two hours of staff time that is not part of adopted budget, or not part of the annual work program, does require majority of the council to redirect staff to pursue something and incur the cost. I would say a survey, and I would recommend a random sample survey, so we get a true response from the survey.
True read?
Would be probably right around $35,000, $40,000. Plus the legal review, you know, I looked to our finance director. Mr. Sung, what was the last, when we did the survey for the fire assessment? It was approximately $30,000. So, you know, just to provide the council the nature of that.
What about this-
Because if we're going to do it, we should do it right. I mean, you know, survey 300 people, get a standard deviation of, you know, three or four, and a confidence level of, you know, 95% or so is what I'd recommend.
And to add to the city manager, the referendum is not required. Under the ordinance passed in 2021, the city did reserve the right to revert back to at-large elections without a vote of the people. So while you may want to do the referendum just for informational purposes, and you could do that through a survey as well, the referendum is not legally required to make changes to the existing ordinance.
Right, simply because we have a few options here. That's not legally required.
It provides you cover.
Yeah.
I think, but we don't know. We have to research it.
Question on the side.
Go ahead.
City manager, on the survey, would there be a range of questions? Because sometimes it's how you ask the question, is what kind of response? And we would do it the right way, and ask the question multiple different ways, and then know how to evaluate that.
There are several professional survey firms within the Bay Area that we would probably do it on RFP, or under our ordinance request, scopes and solicit professional surveying firm.
Okay.
Like a Godbean Associates, or whoever.
So you said it's between $35,000 to $40,000 for a survey, plus legal expenses on that, versus we don't do a survey, which I think is a good idea on that, and then we leave it to the public to go out and collect signatures-
That's right.
Using a statement that they come up with. They might have some help, but, you know, a statement that they come up with, and have an election that's going to cost a lot more than $70,000.
Yeah, I believe the election cost, well, our city clerk, Ms. Tran, can tell you what the last cost was for-
For the last election, we didn't receive the bill just yet. But I suspect it's going to be like around at least $180,000 or $85,000, since we did have like a citywide measure on there. I would assume this will be a citywide thing, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So clearly, the survey and getting legal clarification of, if the resident, if the voter said, "We don't like this, we want to change", boom, whatever that is, what that might open us up to. And then I would only throw out there that, given that we've already had one discussion, and Milbury's leadership, both with artificial turf, and polystyrene bands, and plastic bag bands, that did help lead the way in the state, is that Little Milbury continues in its way of saying, "We're going to do the right thing. We're going to do the research the right way. If we have to spend a little bit of money right now, we're at least collecting the data that we need to make a proper decision." And it may not go any farther. Maybe the residents will, once they've got it in front of them, change their minds. But we're doing it the right way, and it's a good use of our resources. And it's a good use of Milbury path, showing the way for all of the other cities, who will hopefully then give Senator Becker and his colleagues the political cover that they need to change CVRA. I think there's a lot of people in Sacramento that have been afraid to touch CVRA. We've talked about this, maybe not at a public meeting, but the fear of touching it, of doing something. We want to give our politicians the ammunition to fight a bad law.
To the city clerk, are you saying the term limit extension costs the city $180,000?
I didn't get the bill yet, but that's the estimate.
No, no.
Not the two districts. The city clerk said about this last November, 2005.
That includes everything.
And that includes all five districts voting on it?
Right, so the $200,000 rounded up is the estimate.
Okay, I would like, I would like to point out, it was kind of interesting. So the term limit initiative that went on the ballot, which had no campaign, the results were like 77% the city of Milbury. Seventy-eight percent of the residents were for the initiative. So I did think that was, Milbury really speaks its mind when it's given the opportunity. That's the only reason I point that out, because some people were calling, saying, "I'd like to help you with Measure FF", and it's like, there's no campaign for FF. The residents are deciding, so. Yeah, I mean, just to bring it back to this discussion. Yeah, I mean, we are all getting kind of the same impression from the residents here. They would like to somehow get back to at-large. So I just wanted to throw that in. Sorry. My lapse.
So that brings back, city manager, do you have enough direction? Or do you need a more formal action to give the authority to spend money?
You know, we need a motion, and a vote of the council to pursue the survey, legal research. My authority is $50,000, this will exceed my authority, so I would, I mean, I can come back, but I would allocate up to $100,000, kind of soup to nuts, to really answer the question, you know? I don't know if it's going to cost that much, but up to that, so we can, because there are some really, I mean, I'm not the attorney in the room, but I think there's some difficult questions here that need to be fully researched, and it's going to take some time.
Perhaps you can bring back a proposal from some research firm, so that we can act on it, instead of just authorizing a blank check here, right? You know, contact a couple of firms, let them do a, let them do a bid, and say, "Hey, if we want to survey, say, I don't know, a sample of 1,000 people within the city, right, with a certain amount of standard deviation, and what would the cost proposal be? What would be the end result, timeline, so that the council can make a decision?"
Mr. Mayor, we can certainly do that, yeah.
Yes. All right. So I think that would be my motion, to have the director staff to bring back a proposal, to work with a research firm, to conduct the survey, and let the council decide how to proceed with that, with that research proposal. You have a hands up?
Clarification. So your motion is to go do more homework, come back to a new city council, and ask them to actually set aside the funding for a survey and the legal research?
We need to have-
Well, yeah, but we can also say that the city, the motion, if you're up to a friendly motion, if not, I'm going to vote against your motion, is-
Wouldn't be the first time.
We tonight, this city council, votes to give the city manager the authority to spend up to $100,000 to investigate, to conduct a survey and the legal research. And, but, before going ahead, bring it back to that future city council to do the final improvement. The city council would be approving the award of the contract anyway, wouldn't they?
If it is over $50,000, correct.
And we're looking at the survey component at 35 to 40, so it's questionable whether it would come back or not. You can get what you want. I'm just trying to not have this go a little bit longer, because the clock is ticking whether the residents need to collect signatures on their own to make the March special election. Your request would mean that it wouldn't come back to council until January, brand-new city council, having to debate this all over again, versus giving the city manager the authority to move forward on this and get it done with, and you guys start with a whole new year on things.
Can we, may I get clarif-
Vice Mayor?
Can we get clarification as to when signatures would, how that, what's the deadline if the residents choose? I mean, we don't want to, we're trying to educate the residents, first and foremost, so that nobody goes down the wrong path. So do we have clarification on that? Because the legal research would help the residents, and so-
So I would imagine, Laurie, sorry, legal counsel, if I may ask. So is the city even, can we spend legal dollars, city legal dollar, to advise on an item that the citizen want to take upon themselves to do a referendum or legislation on?
I mean, the-
If the citizens want to do something, they're going to do something. They raise their funds, they have a citizen movement, right? You know, I mean, we've seen this in the past here in this city, quite recently.
Maybe I can, maybe I can help.
Yeah, please.
So we just looked at it, so the election's March 24th? March 4th?
Okay.
You have to have things in 88 days before, so December 6th is the deadline. So it's just not even realistic that it would be in March.
Okay, so it's-
So it's kind of not a, you know, worthy of a discussion, because I don't think there's any reality.
All right.
Yeah, yeah.
When?
December 6th. And there's just no, there's no possible way that-
And then, and then the next election will be November, which gives us the whole year for a legislative effort in Sacramento to actually getting it done, rather than us spending time and money on doing that right now.
Again, I've been on a Cal City Policy Committee for three years, attending Cal City policy events. This has been discussed at the Cal City legislative level for years, without any action going forward on CVRA. If CVR needs to be changed, it's going to come from the people, or from a city like ours, who has gone through bad experiences of being underneath CVRA.
Or legislation, which is part of the discussion.
Which can take 10 years. Well, I mean, as a new-
We've got to have a little faith in our legislator in Sacramento. We elect good people there.
And I've worked on passing laws for 40 years. It doesn't just happen in your first year unless there's a wave of energy behind it. That's how plastic bags happened, and that took eight years. You know, we were a miracle with artificial turf.
Vice Mayor?
Yes. Senator Becker has already been working on this legislation. It will not take 10 years. Hopefully, he's successful, and our efforts along those lines are similarly so.
Yeah. He has eight years in office.
Yes, yes.
So he wouldn't take 10.
It's like, no. And I got confirmation today, he is going forward with the legislation. So, yeah, I think the question is, we all, I think, have the interpretation of what we're hearing from the public. We're trying to find out. I think going ahead, at least with the legal aspect, is important, because whoever the council is should know what the possible impacts are if the residents go ahead, if they don't, whatever here. I don't think you need to do a poll. I think the poll is just going to tell you what we kind of already know, those of us who were knocking on doors recently, and just since the very beginning. So, I mean, I think the justifiable thing to do is to instruct the legal research to be done, so that this council and the next council have legal understanding here, or have a legal opinion. Now, I will remind this council, you get an opinion. You are the policymakers. So with the opinion, you make the decision thereafter. You'll notice, legal counsel and I had a little back and forth here in that I don't quite agree with some of the things that were said. So I just want to remind you of that thing. So I would like to make the motion that this council authorizes research into what would happen if the residents went after this on their own, or if, at a certain point in time, a future council put it on the ballot for voter approval, you know, in November or whenever. So I think it's good to have that research done. So that would be my motion.
Your question?
Second, clarification. Three times, I have brought this up, I think the vice mayor has also brought it up, and what we get is the same legal memo about the same issue. We're not talking about PICO versus Santa Monica, I just want to make it clear. We are talking about exactly what the vice mayor just said. What would happen to the city, what would be the city's liabilities if a people do a rever, or exposure? Use the legal terms, as you, that. And two, what would happen if the city? Not a reverbic, regurgitation of PICO versus Santa Monica. I've read all of these. I don't need another explanation of PICO versus Santa Monica. But there also are two other cases that we talked about at Cal Cities. But it's exactly what the vice mayor said. And I just want to make sure that the motion that I seconded is very clear, not PICO versus Santa Monica.
I think the legal research that is being asked to perform by the vice mayor was to research if the citizen were to do a referendum, to legislate an ordinance, to put us back from district, back to at-large, what would be the exposure of the city, correct? Vice Mayor? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Go right ahead. What was it? My apologies.
So, it, so you're, what you're asking is for us to do a legal research-
Right.
On, should the citizen choose to do a legislation on their own through referendum to put us back from district to at-large, what would be the exposures of the city?
And if the city council chose to move forward to give it to the voters?
Well, the second part, we already done. We already- Well, the second part we already done, we already done the research to that.
No, I don't think we have.
Well, I, if I may.
So it would be researching both alternatives so that future council would have that at their.
I think, I think if the city council directs it to be placed to the voters, I would, I would assume that you would have the exposure and the liability if you, if somebody litigated. If citizens take it upon themselves.
Still a justice.
Who does whoever's litigate? Do they sue the citizens?
The people of Millbrae.
The people that signed the signature, do they sue the city of Millbrae?
Well, again, that's what I'm asking for information on.
That's something we'd have to research.
Yeah, I, I actually don't know.
Both aspects.
I mean, I, I think I've seen it several times over my history that the group, the entity that, that signs it is sued and the municipality, so I, anyway, I, we, we'd have to research it, I have no idea.
That's what I just called for a vote on.
Okay, alright, well, well. Uh, yeah, okay, Councilmember Riley.
Yes, I have a question for our attorney. So for example, if we spend money and effort and time, then our citizen wants to go very at large, are we exposed as to the legal issue?
That's what we need to research, whether an action by the voters would subject the city to potential liability and legal risk.
You mentioned there's no any case back to the district, only never had for very large and become the district, then never had the district back to city at large, right?
That's correct, there's no legal precedent for reverting back to at-large elections.
So looks like, sorry, go ahead.
But, sorry to interrupt, but I believe this question is more of a procedural question, not just dealing with this particular issue, but just referenda in general.
Since we have no case back to large, do you think it's worth it to spend time and effort and money to do that?
That's really up to the city council to decide.
Thank you.
That's the decision we need to make right now. Yeah, whether or not it justifies to spend the public's money to research that legal aspects of it, should the citizen choose to do so, but I, I guess, anyway, the citizen hasn't collected a signature yet. I think we're getting a little bit ahead of the public here.
I don't, I don't wanna speak for the vice mayor, but she said it well. We are trying to do some work now to help the citizen group that has already approached me understand what they could be getting themselves into and getting the city into. So let's get the information now, let's know where we can be and help them do the right thing.
So, I don't know if.
City manager?
Legal counsel, but, but, but that statement, I think for the record, it, we, we do, we are not going to do work for a citizens group. No, but that, I mean, but we're not going to, so for the record, we are not going to spend money on a citizens group that has approached a specific council member, myself, whoever, and do the research for them. If this city council for cit, the city wants to do something, then we can do that research. But we are not going to research on behalf of citizens that may or may not, where they, they can, they need to hire their own legal counsel.
Then let me reframe, let me restate.
Absolutely.
I, I hear you, but the mayor just said they haven't even collected signatures yet. Once they collect signatures, they've already got language written, and we don't know the impact. That's what we're asking to get legal clarification. This is what I would have asked for last February when I first started asking for this issue to get placed on the agenda and to go through X number of months with frustration of never being able to discuss all of the aspects that CVRA has put us under. Right now, what the vice mayor has suggested, and I've seconded, is the ability to fully scope out what are the implications? And that will help this current council, but the future current coun, council on that. It is not to help a group that, that isn't, but I, I like the way the vice mayor said it earlier. So I apologize if I framed it that way.
I just wanted for the, I think we understand, I think we understand the direction generically of the analysis of the exposure to the city under certain scenarios.
Councilmember Riley?
I have a question for manager, city manager, do we have this money to sit on the side?
We have a budget for it.
Do you have this budget?
We, we have a budget that is utilized for certain things that don't arise, that, that we, we don't know, so we do set aside money. So, you know, within that $100,000 range or less, we, we would have, um, we would have budget to do some research.
Okay.
Thing is, I just, just so the council knows, I don't have the authority over $50,000. Um, so that always has to come back to the city council.
Vice Mayor?
Um, I'm about to call for the question, but to Councilmember Riley's point here, city councils can also put a limit on a request so we can say expenditures up to a certain amount if we were worried about it getting out of control. I don't think, I'm not worried about that at this point, but I just wanted to let you know. Um, so you can put a, a cap on what you ask the staff to do. If it reaches the cap, come, they would have to come back to the city council to explain. I just wanted to point that out, so I'm gonna call for the question.
Can you please clarify the motion one more time, cause a lot of things has been discussed here?
Motion is to instruct staff to look into the legal aspects of this city council, putting a referendum on the ballot, uh, to go back to at-large, and the impacts if the city residents were to go ahead on their own to pursue that avenue. If I have a second? No second?
Oh, that was a second, I had already a second.
I believe there already was a second by Councilmember Schneider.
Call for the question.
Alright. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Council, Councilmember Riley.
Aye.
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Papin.
Yes.
Mayor Phong.
Yes.
Alright. The city council instructed staff to look into legal aspect of the city council putting a referendum on the ballot to revert back to at-large elections and the impact if their citizens initiative do so with, um, the, the motion passed by five to zero.
Okay, thank you, item number 10, Millbrae Home Listen, oh, city manager, you have something?
I know the time's over, but, and I know a lot of people listen. I just don't want anybody in the community to go out and think that we're gonna be putting something on the March ballot. This is just a generic question.
This is a legal research into a couple of aspects, very specific.
This is not going on the ballot, this is just a generic research hypothetical.
Knowing our legal rights and our legal exposures.
Just for the benefit of the public, thank you.
Thank you. Item number 10, Millbrae Homelessness Engagement Local Program Quarterly Update. Assistant City Manager Isabel Carlos.
Yes, thank you, honorable mayor.
Thank you for joining us.
Vice Mayor, members of the city council, Isabel Carlos, Assistant City Manager, Human Resources Director. The item before you, uh, tonight is the Millbrae Homeless Engagement Local Program Quarterly Update. And I'm gonna give a little bit of background on this program. Uh, the Millbrae Homeless, Homeless Engagement Program, also known as HELP, initiated as a pilot program in 2021. It has been a successful program with a proven track record. Due to its success, it has received ongoing funding through discretionary Measure K funds and grants for several years now. HELP provides a critical real-time and rapid response outreach, facilitating temporary shelter, transportation assistance, mental health services, detoxification, rehabilitation referrals, and also individualized intensive case management services for the unhoused individuals. The program has helped many unhoused and many unsheltered individuals through hundreds of interventions, including facilitating hundreds of temporary shelter placements and permanently housing eight individuals over the life of the program. So with, with that brief introduction, I, I would like to, uh, introduce Mr. Marlin Mandiera, who's the Program Director for Homeless Outreach Teams for Life Moves. He's joining us virtually tonight and he's gonna present the quarterly, uh, data report for the period of July 1st, 2024 to September 30th, 2024. Mr. Mandiera?
Good evening, everyone, uh, thank you Isabel for the kind introduction and thank you and your team for organizing and inviting us to the meeting today. And just, uh, I appreciate the council, the mayor, the vice mayor, your interest in this program. Um, so it's, I'm very happy to join, if we go to the next slide, please? Okay, so this is our agenda for today, I'll cover the, the program overview and the metrics, the challenges and successes, and Isabel will cover the conclusion. Next slide, please. Okay, so here's, there's a program overview. Um, the Millbrae Team, um, Homeless Engagement Local Program, uh, provides after-hours outreach to unsheltered individuals throughout the city of Millbrae. Um, started officially, um, um, January 2023 and is expected to continue through the end of December of this year. Um, it serves singles, couples and families. Um, we serve the area of the Millbrae BART station, um, the downtown area and other areas as well. More recently, we've also been providing more presence at the Millbrae Library. Um, and then finally on this page, um, the funding has come throughout the life of the program, both from the city of Millbrae as well as the, um, in collaboration with the county of San Mateo. Um, we do appreciate support from all parties involved in sustaining this program. Um, let's go on to the next slide, please. Uh, so here picture you have, um, you can't really, they were on the, on the first slide, it's, you can't really see them here, but, um, Jesse Garcia and Christian Valdez, um, two of our case managers that are dedicated to this program. Um, they're, the best way to describe them is that they have, um, a lot of empathy, patience, um, and authenticity when they approach people, especially because of their schedule. I think their approach has been really important. Um, they are some of the most welcoming people you could meet, um, especially for, um, our clients that we're engaging between, you know, in the late evening hours, as you can see here, from 12:30 to 11:30 PM, and on other days from 3:30 PM to 2:30 AM. Uh, they are the right people for this job, and they've been doing a wonderful job of engaging people at these difficult hours. Um, let's go on to the next slide, please. Now, um, the first metrics, as I was mentioning, their, their ability to engage people at a difficult hour, uh, who also are experiencing perhaps many barriers at that moment. They've been doing really well with that category. Our goal for, for, um, the six-month period is from July through December, that's a six-month window, but I'm reporting on the first quarter of that, so, um, we, we had engagements, outreach and engagement with 34 individuals during that time, so achieving 68% of our goal, um, overall goal for the, um, for the remainder of this program. So they do really well with that part, and this is, um, something they specialize in, like I said, they do a lot of wellness checks, they approach people that they see that might have a need, uh, who appear that they are looking for a place to go. Those are the people they approach. Um, and the, for the second metric, um, this is for Case Management Services. Uh, they do maintain a caseload, each of them maintains a caseload. Um, at the moment, they've achieved 28, um, unduplicated individuals, uh, meaning 28 people under caseload combined, um, and that's out of the 12 that we were expecting. Uh, so they are exceeding that metric at this point. Um, the next metric is placements into shelter. Um, and I'll explain in a moment, but we have one person that went into a standard shelter stay, meaning that person was assigned through coordinated entry, uh, a shelter stay that could go from a few days to a few weeks, perhaps months. Um, in addition to that, there were 14, 15 other people who received a one-night bet. In the past, when we've reported on this program, we've highlighted people that have gotten the one-night or weekend emergency bet. Um, under the county's guidance, they wanted us to report that a little bit differently, but I still wanted to reflect the one-night beds, which I think is still an important service that they've been providing. So overall, during this quarter, 16 people did not have to spend a night on the streets because of the Millbrae Team's assistance. Um, going on to the next metric is, uh, placements, um, placements into permanent housing. The goal for the six-month period was two people entering permanent housing. They achieved that during the first quarter. Um, at the next quarter, you'll see that they've continued to help with other people enter permanent housing, at least one other individual, so that number might not seem really high, but again, we're talking about people that are being engaged in, in the late evening, who experience many barriers and, um, perhaps the severity of the barriers is more intense as well. So, so those, the small number there actually speaks volumes for their ability to work with people that are experiencing mental health, substance use issues and many other barriers. Um, let's go on to the next slide, please. Um, so we do collect some demographic data, um, and I'll just give you the highlights here. Um, out of the 19 households or individuals that, that were, where we can pull this data from, the highest factors here are chronic health conditions at 42%, physical disability at 26%, mental health conditions at 58%, and substance abuse at 47%. Um, so again, I'm just emphasizing the, the, the type of, um, people they engage, um, in the community are facing many barriers and their approach to be sensitive to, to whatever the, the person is going through has been successful, but we do have a high severity and multiple barriers presenting with the people they engage at night. So it's a challenge for them, but they are doing really well with that. Let's go on to the next slide, please. Okay, so continuing with the demographic data here, um, we see that the largest group is ages 25 to 34. Um, and from there is 21, 16, there's representation in the. Been asked how this compares with other life moves programs. Um, and I could say, I'll re, again what I've said in the past.
He's still talking, but I don't think we can hear him. I think his wifi is out.
Say this again, can you hear me now?
Try again, please, we lost you for about 20 seconds.
Okay, um, I'm gonna turn off my video, my connection seems to be unstable. So what I was saying here, our largest demographic is 25 to 34 years. Um, compared to other life moves program, this program leans a lot toward the younger ages. Uh, for residential programs, you will see higher numbers in the, the 45 to 54 category, for example. I'm not sure why that difference, but that's just, you know, I'm just explaining that factor here. It does lean a little bit younger for this, for this particular program. Um, you see almost an even distribution between Asian, black, uh, white and Hispanic. Uh, it's a very diverse audience that they're finding out there. Let's go on to the next slide. Okay, so our, our team does hand out a survey to people they engage, especially when they're working to get them into a, an emergency bed. Um, from that survey, which from January of this year through September, they handed out 120 surveys. Um, the majority arrived at the BART station via BARTs or, or bus, so they are arriving through public transit. In, in general, they are, they are individuals that do not have their own vehicle, so they're used.
Can you hear us okay? Apparently not.
Are you able to hear me right now?
We lost you for about 15, 20 second again.
Oh, I'm sorry, really apologize for that. Um, so in, in general, what we're saying here is that most people arrive at the BART station via BARTs or bus. Uh, very few individuals have their own transportation. Uh, we believe that people are using, um, transportation as well to just stay out of the elements for a while. Um, the question right below that, how long have people been experiencing homelessness? We see that, um, the vast majority of people are experiencing homelessness for one, two, three years or three-plus years, so significantly, they've been out there for a long time. Um, and that's, you know, that's, um, you know, I think that's just something that, I, I think that number has changed over the past, um, over the course of the program, sometimes we've seen people that are newer to homelessness. Right now, it's leaning toward people with more years. Let's go on to the next slide, please.
Hold on, so can I ask a question, please, while we're on this slide? Yeah, I saw three people arrived to the BART station by Uber and two arrived by police, could you explain that?
Well, I, I think via Uber, I mean, if, if you can think, imagine a scenario where people might be staying with family or friends or perha, perhaps in a different city, um, or somewhere else in the county, and they're trying to get, you know, get, get back to like a source of transportation. Maybe they can have somebody get them an Uber, you know, or sometimes they could provide their own Uber to get back to a transit station, you know, people move around a lot, they have things to do, they have jobs to go to, they're going to back and forth from shelter, and Uber is just one more method of transportation um, that, um, sometimes people do have the resources to, to at least get themselves from one, one place to another via Uber or Lyft. Um, sometimes we as, as, as staff can help people transport via Lyft as well, but we don't have the ability to transport somebody directly. So it's, it's not unheard of for people to use, um, Uber or Lyft to get from one place to another.
But just, for clarification, these are the folks who are, who are experiencing some degree of homelessness and then they arrive to the BART station by ride share. By ride share. And two of them arrived by police cruisers, correct?
Okay, via police, it might be something where, um, it's, I'm I'm assuming there would be something where maybe the police have engaged them out of the community. And maybe they asked to be dropped off at the at a Bart Station so they can maybe think about where else they can go. Um, so it's just, it's you have to think of, um, I would encourage you to think at the Bar- as the Bart Station as. Not just people riding Bart, but just as a hub in general for people trying to figure out where else they're going to go. Right. You go there and try to plan your next step. Um, and sometimes our staff engages them while they're there, trying to figure out where else you're going to go. Um, when I've, when I've gone out there with staff, um. Um, we we have approached people at at the bus station area. And, you know, people are trying to figure out if they're gonna catch the bus to go somewhere else or get back on Bart. Um, and sometimes staff will engage them and. Be able to send them somewhere else like a shelter. So it's something that's in constant movement. Um, so sometimes people will arrive via Uber or other means to the Bart Station to try to figure out what their next step is gonna be. Um, so I I hope that helps, but there is a lot of fluidity to the situation, you know. Um, and do people do arrive via different means? Some have the resources to take ride share, other ones have to walk. Um, so on the next question like right below that, how long have you been experiencing homelessness? I think we talked about that a little bit. That we're seeing a trend for this particular program that I think the numbers for. How long have they been out there? Three plus years and one to three years has has increased, wh- when I remember, um, previous presentations. Let's go on to the next slide, please. Okay, so so this one's important because I think there's all, there's, in every meeting I go to, there's always a lot of conversations about. How much of our county resources might be going to people from outside of the region? So I find this slide very interesting that the highest, um, representation of cities for what is your city of residence, San Mateo. South San Francisco, so it's pretty significant there. San Francisco is right there, but then you continue and most of the other ones are within San Mateo County. Um, there is a lot of overlap, as you can see with San Francisco, but it's not the the only source and it's not the biggest one. So we do have a lot of county representation in who we serve at the Millbrae, at the Millbrae Station. Um, if we continue to the the slide right, the the, I mean, the question right below that, what city do you plan to sleep in? Um, many will identify South San Francisco, Redwood City, um, Burlingame. And so I think what I want to point out there is that, um, with South San Francisco and Redwood City, um. Those are places where where we do have, uh, a connection to a shelter. So some of them are. Identifying perhaps where they're going to spend the night in a shelter that we're putting them in, so. There's, that's the context for that question. They they might be referred to a shelter, and that's why they're answering it that way. Um, let's continue to the next slide. Okay, so this one, I think it's really important to point out, um, a connection between between two of the variables here. Where will you be sleeping tonight? Seventy four percent are identifying shelter because the people that are completing the surveys are often the ones that we have found a one night shelter for them. And then the question right below that, where do you usually sleep? Sixty one, sixty one of them identified outside or unsheltered. So I think if you wanted, if you can think about it this way. The people we're putting in shelter would have otherwise been on the street. So I think there's a very direct correlation between those two variables right there, so I feel good that. They're able to put people in bed that would otherwise be outside. Um, so I think that's a good impact that we're measuring that right there. Um, and as you can see from there, there's a var- a variety of other places where people would stay. Um, but, um, outside or unsheltered is still, would still be a significant one. So let's go on to the next slide. Um, in terms of challenges, I think the 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 majority of of this page right here could be defined as the challenges that the Millbrae. Um, workers are out there in the evening and late at night where other services are not open at that time. So there's a lot of, almost like trying to make a connection for the following day, right? Um, and I think they they do the best they can with that. Um, it's with medical and mental health support, I think there's there's a high demand for that. As you saw with the demographics, there's a high presence. Of mental health conditions as well as physical health conditions that they're trying to make connection to other providers for that. Um, and again, they're trying to make a connection that happens the next day or in the following day, so. We work closely with the day, with our daytime case managers to make those connections. Um, so they support, you know, we work closely with them. Um, to also get them assessed for a standard shelter bed, so that's represented in here as well in the second bullet point. Um, and the third one, the one night beds or cots, there's a limited supply. In general, there's about two beds per shelter. That they could contact and place somebody, which is not a whole lot. And more recently, those have been filled as we see an increase in cabinet clearings and other events that. Sometimes use those beds before it, before they even, um, clock in for their shift. So it's been more difficult for them to access those emergency beds at times. Um, with temporary shelter, um. Regular shelter stays are not always available after a one night stay. So the metrics I was showing you again is we were trying to show how many people take a one night bed. And then enter a regular or standard shelter stay the following day, and that number is very small because that shelter stay is not always available the day after. Um, so the one night bed sometimes is interrupted in terms of like, they have to, they might have to go back into the street the following day. Um, and we expect that that standard shelter list to be a little bit higher demand right now during the winter season. What's helping us right now is we have access to implement weather shelters during specific periods of activation. Um, and then the final one here, and this is just a reality that they're facing, um, with the severity of of. The barriers out in the community at that time, you're seeing people with, um, who are still actively using. Or still not ready to accept services. Um, so staff builds rapport with them. Over time, they talk to them about accessing services and eventually. Many of them do decide that they're ready to receive services with, um, a detox program. Or there are types of programs that can help them get on the right path. So the long term building rapport and building trust is something the team has done, um, since the beginning of the program. Next slide, please. Okay, so what's helped us be successful with this program is collaborating with police to identifying, to identify high needed individuals. Um, um, as needed, we coordinate with, um, the Bart's Crisis Intervention Team. Um, if there are individuals that stand out for both us and for them, then they try to collaborate on that. Um, collaboration with shelter staff to make act, to have access to emergency shelter beds. Um, and the results of that is, um, as we saw in the metrics, two individuals had permanent housing during the first quarter, uh, this past quarter. Um, we will exceed our goal for permanent housing by December. Um, the short term placements have included places such as First Chance, which provides an opportunity for sobering and detox. Um, we have worked with families to get them on the waiting list for family shelters, and some of them have entered successfully into that. Um, and we coordinated a lot with the day shift and with the coordinated entry system to try to. Move people to access, get greater access to the shelter systems. Uh, so there's been success with that, um, and we feel good about. Um, the uniqueness of this program, especially being out there so late at night, connecting with people that otherwise would not be reached. Um, that's the end of my slides. I believe the next slide is going to be Isabel. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Director Bendietta. And so as as you have, uh, mentioned, the program is on track. Uh, to not only meet but exceed the program goals for this last six month period. So a- as mentioned earlier, Help, uh, initiated as a fourteen month, uh, pilot program. Here in Millbrae in October of twenty twenty one. The program's success and positive impact on unsheltered clients that it served has moved the needle towards functional zero. And has led to ongoing funding, including an award through the Working Together to End Homelessness Innovation Grant, uh, Fund Grant. Provided by the county of San Mateo. This extended the program, uh, an additional eighteen months through, uh, June thirtieth of twenty twenty four. In January of twenty twenty four, the city applied for Measure K funds by responding to a notice of funding opportunity. Which was released by the the county of San Mateo. Uh, the grant application met the funding criteria, but it was not approved for funding. Uh, instead, the county of San Mateo announced. That they would be transitioning into a regional, uh, hot model to address homelessness in the county. And that it would have a launch, uh, start, uh, uh, date of January twenty twenty five. The regional transition also established that, um, they would no longer be funding, uh, focused municipal programs such as Millbrae Help. So at the request of the city and to avoid a lapse in services, County Supervisor Dave Pine sponsored discretionary Measure K funds. In the amount of one hundred fifty thousand dollars to continue the program through December thirty first of twenty twenty four. The Help program currently operates with Life Moves still as a service provider. And the county of San Mateo directly administering the program, and it is scheduled to end on December thirty first of this year. Staff, it would be happy to pro- uh, to provide a progress report once the program is is finalized. And bring that back to the council at at a later date. And this concludes staff's presentation, and we're, uh, available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Carlos.
Thank you, and Life Moves, um, Mr. Mendietta, thank you. Um, couple of of suggestions. So, starting for twenty twenty five such, uh, funding. Supervisor-elect Jackie Spear will be sworn in in January. I think it would behoove. The city and Life Move staff to try to get a meeting with her, probably now, uh, on then. Uh, to try to find that discretionary Measure K funding to at least bridge this with more time. I'm sure you've thought about that. My attempts to reach Congresswoman Spear have not been so good lately, but, um, I can try again. Or at least try with her former chief of staff on that, but there are discretionary funds. I will remind everyone that I did a Public Records Act to the county on Measure K funds. Asking what came to Millbrae and the response after sixty days was. Well, we don't really track funding by city, but we think Millbrae is getting its pro rate a share. And I won't be able to dive into all of the Measure K funding, it's complicated, for a few more months. I won't have that ready for you until the springtime. But there's a chance with Congresswoman Spear of maybe getting some funding.
It isn't complicated. It's not complicated. We applied. The county decided not to fund the program. They didn't fund any cities. They funded all nonprofits. This program was working. It it's probably the most successful program anywhere in the county. Um, the county chose not to fund this program and moved to Hot Teams. Hot Teams have their purpose, but what we found and you heard in this presentation is others. The reason why this works, and I think it's a model throughout the country that could be used, is. Everyone knows Jesse, he's been on the program from day one. He's out in the field, you saw, eleven o'clock, two A M, three A M. Wh- when people need the help, because this is an issue that's twenty four seven, it's not just nine to five, five days a week. The social service workers are there, and so what I've learned through through this process is that is what success is. Having a hot team that goes out twenty four, forty eight, seventy two, four days later to address the situation is not effective. But we will monitor it, starting January first, this the direction the county wants to go and. See if it works or not, but thi- this program has been highly successful. And and you can probably hear it in my voice, it it's a shame. It's a shame that this isn't recognized. As a priority for the Board of Supervisors, the fund, because this works.
And 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 I agree, city manager. I will remind every supervisor has their own set of discretionary funds. And as an aside, I've invited incoming Supervisor Lisa Gutierrez to Millbrae to show her. About the airport and One Shoreline. Hopefully she'll replace Supervisor Pine on One Shoreline, and she should be a good advocate for us. But I think we should be using that time right now for that. Um, in terms of just something to think about, and what I'd love to, I won't be here, but for the new data. With the new care court in the county, is that having any im- impacts on Millbrae? With the fact that Bart is putting in the fair gates at San Francisco Airport, but in none of the other cities in there. Will that have an impact? I just, it would be curious to see if Life Moves is seeing any difference. My biggest concern, again with the federal election and the direction of the country nationally. Is our LGBTQ QI community, especially young people. And are we gonna see an increase in young people at an end of a line station next to an airport on the edge of the continent? And make sure that we're looking out for the LGBTQ community, and I think there might be some additional resources. In terms of housing, I I haven't looked into this, but maybe we reach out to the ca- the center in San Mateo. On that, and then I believe next year is Super Bowl year, is that still a year away? We were schooled for the new council members. When the Super Bowl was here, when I was a new council member, we received training on human trafficking, which goes up every time there's a Super Bowl. So, um, maybe, I hate to add more work to what Life Moves is already doing, but these are some other considerations to keep in mind. Of additional things that could be happening at our our train station. Uh, with that, um, you know, whatever I can do when I'm no longer on council. I very much appreciate everything that you do. Let's make sure we get as much data. I remember meeting with County Executive Calagui, I believe. I, Mendietta, Mr. Mendietta, I don't know if you were with us. There was some discrepancy in how they count data and how we count data. Have we fixed that? I don't think it was ours. I think it was them. But have we clarified that our data is sound?
Well, yeah, I can address that real quick, if you can go back a few slides. Keep going. Right there. So the third column. The county's methodology changed, and so you can see that of the fifteen that was the goal, the county only wanted Life Moves to report one. We have a small. Asterisk footnote underneath that, it's hard to read, but it's actually fifteen, and this has to do. And and what's the definition of Isabel? They wanted to define it as. Permanent, short term, or or I don't know, something, but it it just. To your point, it's, it it is skewed the way the county's reporting it. That's why we have that asterisk there, so. Even though the county wants to.
Regular, temporary.
Yeah, regular, temporary.
Yes, I think, um, I think, uh, Director Mandetta, you said it was a a regular, temporary.
Sure.
Shelter placement?
Yeah, I'd be happy to clarify that, actually. Um, so what I mentioned is that. Um, the Millbrae team is really successful at utilizing one night beds. Or, you know, what could also be a weekend bed, right? Um, those are ones where they could refer people directly into that bed at the time they encounter somebody. Um, the standard shelter stays that the city wanted to report are ones that are issued by the coordinated entry system through the core agencies.
If I may, he said the city, but he meant the county, just for the record.
Okay, yeah, yeah, exactly. So, um, yeah, sorry about that. So, yeah, so. What they wanted is to report on that metric, that seven percent is, um. Shelter stays that are issued through the coordinated entry system. Um, for example, issued by Samaritan House, or any number of core agencies throughout the county. Those can, can, those shelter stays are a lot longer. They have a a place that could stay out for several weeks or maybe a few months. Um, however, the short term state the Mill- Bill- Millbrae team utilizes does not always translate into. And, you know, that that standard stay. It's a different process. Um, so we just wanted to reflect both of those metrics, both the the county's expectation with that seven percent, but also. You know, continuing the, for consistency's sake, what we have been reporting is that short term stay, that one night stay. We wanted to at least put that as a footnote so we can see that work has continued.
I I I appreciate, we count the data as it exists and we tell it quickly, and the one thing I learned about. Um, why we have police dropping people off, and I've actually seen this in action. When I was released from Peninsula Emergency Room, there was an unhoused person who was released. And he asked, from the hospital. And sometimes, and I I'm perfectly willing to be corrected on this, if a patient is on a fifty one fifty hold. And they are released, they can ask the the officer there to take them, and the officer must take them, I guess, within a spa- a distance. To one place, but they're familiar with Millbrae Bart Station, so quite a few of the patients released from Peninsula Hospital. End up at Bart by way of the police, and I have this from a Burlingame police officer that lives in Millbrae. So that's where my data is from on that. Um, and I I saw it myself when I was released from the E R a year and a half ago on that. Um, you know, that's what they're familiar with. I also know that Hillsborough, um, very gentlemanly like. Take some unhoused that they find and they put them up at the Dylan Hotel for a couple of days, and then they end up in Millbrae. So there are these different systems that happen out there. Anyway, I appreciate this. Let me know. I I know it's gonna be tough to find the money on that, but I I really think that we need to, um, bring. Supervisor-elect Spear in on what's happening here, and I gave her a tour, uh, a year ago to show her what was happening at Bart. But it probably would make sense to do it now, especially with the new fair gates at SFO. I'm trying to figure out how they're still sleeping at SFO unless they walk up McDonald Road or come in from San Bruno. On that, I I I'm curious, but thank you.
Any other council comments? Nobody? No, okay, all right, well, so, um. It is, um, troubling. That we have such a successful program that we have now implemented for over two years now. Right? Millbrae has dedicated. Millbrae has dedicated quite a bit of resources into this. We've been working with the county, with the Board of Supervisors to provide funding and put this program together, and it's worked, and it has helped hundreds of people to get off the street. Get into a warm bed, a warm shower, a doorknob, whatever that might be, to help them rehabilitate, give them a second chance. And, you know, I'm still baffled as to why these fundings are not being dedicated to a program as successful as this. Because if we're serious about making an impactful progress on functional zero homelessness, this is where it needs to begin. It needs to begin at every city. And we've demonstrated that we're capable of doing that. So I am, I want to remain hopeful that with next year coming forward, that we can work with our new Board of Supervisors to restart this program. But unfortunately, without funding, it will terminate at the end of this year. But I will say that, you know, each and every one of our cities in San Mateo County needs to be a part of the solution in functional zero homelessness. And in doing so, you know, I think Millbrae has certainly dedicated our fair share of resources to this. But in order for us to, you know, really continue to make impactful progress, you know, we must take, moving forward in 2025 without funding, we must take legislative and budgetary measures in order to continue to make these impactful and effective progress in reducing homelessness right here in Millbrae. So unless anyone else have any added further questions or comments, I think we have a hand raised online. City Clerk, would you please?
Brace X, please accept the mute.
Good evening, hello. I have several comments and problems with the data presented and statements made, but I'm going to just focus on a couple for the time being. First, everyone's touted how successful this program is, and it's successful beyond the vision, and it's exceeding its goals. My question is, how can we say it's successful if we're seeing more homeless people on the streets? And I want to give you a couple of examples on attachment one. The performance matrix that the City Manager was just talking about, placements into shelters. The 15 other clients receiving one-night beds. The question is, is that 15 people receiving one night of bedding during this quarter? In the past, the data reflected that the night stays were counted on bed nights, not individuals. But Mayor Fong has consistently misinterpreted the data, saying that it's been hundreds of peoples been placed into housing. And then my state council member, Michael Brownrigg, used that information and was quoted, misquoted in the Daily Journal. This is not a successful program placing 15 people in a bed during a quarter for one night each. That means they put five people a month in a one bed for one night. Also, the other one I'd like to point out is the residency. People could say they're from wherever. And the real question is not where you consider your residency, it's where were you last employed, or where did you go to high school? Where were you last living in a home prior to becoming homelessness, homeless? This metric is exceedingly abusive to the public and makes it sound like it's our problem when we know that lots of cities and lots of states are engaged in patient dumping. In 2013, when Gavin Newsom was mayor of San Francisco, he actually sued other states for patient dumping. And the question is, even though Councilmember Snyder stated that sometimes police will take the homeless people from the hospital and take them to BART because that's where they want to go, that's not necessarily the case, because Marin has been found to engage in pump patient dumping in San Francisco. So presenting this data in the manner that it is presented here makes it sound successful, but it's really not. I don't consider the amount of money spent to house five people for one month is successful. Thank you for your time.
Any other public comments?
That, we don't have any additional comments.
Thank you so much. That ends public comment on item number 10. Bring it back to the council. Anyone else have any questions or comment for either Ms. Carlos or the Director from Life Moves? Okay. So I think we need a motion to accept the report from Life Moves.
Motion.
Okay. Can we call for a row?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Riley?
Aye.
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pappin?
Yes.
Mayor Fong?
Aye.
Item number 10 passed by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you so much. Moving on to council comments. Anyone else wants to begin? Thank you, Ms. Ms. Carlos. Go ahead.
Okay. Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency met last week for Mr. Sung and Mr. Williams. We looked at the, till 2044, to pay off the pension debt, which is not the same as our pension debt, it's SF, their own private thing. There was discussion at that meeting of, is there a way that Bosqua could pay it off sooner the way we're paying off our pension obligations? And that was beyond my understanding, so I'd love a briefing at some point. We will bring this back in January or February, I believe. I think it's going to go to the Policy Committee again and before it comes back to the full board. But there was consensus amongst the Bosqua board that this pension liability is big, it's out of our hands because we're wholesale customers of SFPUC, but are there some other ways we should be looking at it? And it's just beyond my personal experience. Nicole Sancula, the Director, it will be retiring officially on December 1st. I have had a couple of people, including the Quigs, ask me when the retirement party is. I don't have the date yet, but invitations will go out, and the Quigs are most definitely invited. One Shoreline had a tour. I know that Councilman-elect Rinaldi and I were both there, as was our city attorney. And we started at the, sort of the Millbrae-Burlingame border and walked the Burlingame segment. So we saw a lot of basically rough-looking riprap and things like that. But afterwards, I had people from the environmental community tell me that they think that the Millbrae Reach is one of the best-looking reaches of the bay in the entire bay. And I had never looked through it with those eyes before. But the recommendation right now is to build a 12-foot mound over the existing park, and then maybe a wall. That said, then One Shoreline gave its meeting, it had its public meetings this past Tuesday. We had some Millbrae attendance, which was great. I wish we would have had more Millbrae attendance. And I want to give a shout out to Santana on our, I won't try to pronounce her Thai name, but Tian, her short version. She showed Len Matterman a bunch of maps, and then Len came and talked to me, he's the executive director of One Shoreline, and said, "Now, One Shoreline would like to learn more about our east side, our flooding issues, our High Line Canal issues, the fact that BART and Caltrain are at high risk on that." So I'll be giving Len Matterman a tour, possibly while I'm still on council, if not afterwards on that. So it was a, kind of disappointing that we didn't walk through Millbrae, but the end result after Tuesday night was a good outcome, and I appreciate One Shoreline being open to coming and learning how we can't just fix sea level rise, we have to look at a bunch of different issues. I will be part of a PCBA, Peninsula Chinese Business Association art contest on December 3rd, so I think all the students have submitted their art things. Hopefully then the new council can celebrate these kids come January on that. And then finally, there is, I have one remaining San Francisco roundtable, which, just so that everybody knows, everybody calls it the Noise Roundtable, but the original charter had noise, and the way all the other roundtables throughout the world also look at air pollution, which means they're looking at chemical spills from ground operations, like a fuel spill on that, as well as particulate air pollution. And we tend not to look at it here at SFO. It has been very frustrating, because it is in the very initial charter from back in 1980. The other thing is, the city cooperated with SFO to set up some temporary monitors to look at low-frequency noise that comes from in back of jet engines, which is in back of the runways. And the theory, which is going to be tested out, is that that low-frequency noise, those waves, as an engineer here, those waves come up to our hillsides and concentrate and can actually be louder as they move up the hill, depending on the angle, than they can be at Bayside Manor. So whomever replaces me on SFO Roundtable, I'm happy to give you sort of a primer on low-frequency noise. The problem we have is we are unique in airports, that most of the traffic goes from, away from us, and not, and we get 77% to 80% to 90% of the flights are hitting us with what's called backblast noise. And that noise, the FAA does not count. The FAA only measures noise from underneath a jet engine, five feet off the ground and higher. So we have this data gap that this study is intended to show. We tried to get it into the FAA reauthorization, which happened last spring, it didn't get in, and that will be the mission of Millbrae and the closing communities, Hillsborough, Burlingame, San Bruno, to work on changing the metrics. And there's still an outside chance to get the FAA to change the actual metrics that are used. And I don't know who's going to replace me. I know that Ruben Holber is my new District III replacement, but he does work for an agency that works for San Francisco, and he may have to recuse himself on airport issues. But District III is very heavily impacted by low-frequency noise. All you have to do is listen to Saturday Night at midnight to 12:30, and you will hear a constant wave of continuous, no break in the noise. So that's kind of my parting gift to the city. One more Airport Noise Roundtable, the first Wednesday of December, and then it will start back again in February. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Real quick, and some not-so-quick here. Bosqua is having a rain barrel giveaway program, and I think if you go online, I think the next event is in Hillsborough somewhere, so if we can get that up there. Caltrain, the holiday train stopping in Millbrae will be on December 8th at 5:30, and I'm wondering if city staff can provide some bleachers? Because it's always too crowded and not everybody can see. So if it would be possible for our city staff to get some more seating there or some bleachers, it would really help everybody see Santa and everybody else who's there. So I would ask that we try to participate a little more with Caltrain on that event, because it is a big, it's a great family event to see the train all lit. I don't know how they're going to light the new trains, that'll be interesting. The new trains all lit up, and Santa and everybody there. It's also a toy drive, so I remind you that it's a toy drive and that our fire department, Central Fire, is also has a toy drive going on for the holidays. Went to the 20th anniversary of the Millbrae Library. Congratulations to all the Millbrae residents and library staff. That was one of the first bond measures Millbrae ever passed. And what a huge investment, and what a wonderful resource. Millbrae's library is one of the most used in the entire region. They just have done an outstanding program. It's a place where you can check out computers, you can check out books, you can do all kinds of things, and they have all kinds of special events. They had music, they had a magician, it was just great to see everybody taking, using the library. So my compliments to everybody and the library staff. I would make a special request to, two special requests, actually, on Millbrae, on the airport land use. I hope that Millbrae and the next council will lead the way, asking for a formal update of the Millbrae, or the airport land use to include childcare. Right now, our developers that come in are prohibited from putting childcare in their facilities. And that airport land use program is so out of date. We go through three steps just to overturn them every single time. So asking for a formal request that that document be updated to allow, like our two new developments on Broadway Avenue, they probably would have put in childcare, but they were prohibited from doing so based on the current airport land use. So whoever, this city should take a formal aspect of that. Now I'm going to actually ask my colleagues to take note of what happened in San Carlos last night. And I'm going to write a letter, and I hope some of you will join me. A letter stating that we, certain members of the council, take the position of no confidence against Sheriff Christina Corpus and calling the sheriff to resign. Now, know that we contract with the sheriff's office, and we've done that since 2012. The contract is up June 30th, 2025. Similarly, so is San Carlos's contract. But doing a letter like this is just out of support for the men and women of the sheriff's department that work in Millbrae. If you have not read the first 92 pages of the Judge, Dolores Cordell's report, it is very enlightening and very kind of demoralizing. I'm going to read part of it for you here, in the conclusion here.
City Manager?
I get great concern, because I believe that as an elected body, you must follow the law. And I'm going to look to the city attorney. Items that have been discussed by several councilmembers tonight, I believe, have gone overboard because it's not on the agenda. This item is simply for a councilmember to report back to the city council on items that they represent the city on, and there's a list of committee and commissions. So just for the record, I think, and I'll look to the city attorney, you need to really focus on those items and not on the agenda, because if you pursue something that isn't, somebody questions the very authority of what you're seeking, it could then invite a lawsuit, it can invite, you know, whatever action. I just think we need to be very careful.
That's right. Thank you, City Manager. So right now, we're under council comments for committee reports. So if there's an item that a councilmember would like to request to be agendized, that can be done separately, but this is not the time for discussion or request for the council to take action on any item that is not on the agenda. And the matter that you've mentioned, Vice Mayor Pappin, is not on the agenda for this evening.
I understand it's not on the agenda. I'm noting that I'm going to be sending a letter and asking colleagues to join me in that effort as support for every one of the sheriff's employees that work within the city of Millbrae. Right now, over 106 sworn officers have resigned from the sheriff's department, some of them before the retirement even came into play here. This is a very serious matter. There is no real recall for the people unless they're willing to recall throughout the county here. So this is, again, is a matter that the sheriff's office has supported the city of Millbrae, has protected the city of Millbrae. Everyone who works there has really put in the efforts here, and the office of the sheriff right now, in summary, there's nothing short of new leadership that can save the organization. So letting my colleagues know if you are interested in joining, in doing a public letter in support of our staff, because our staff is in this report, and they have mentioned retaliation and a few other items here, which are completely unacceptable. So to support the people that work So to support the people that work so hard to protect us, I am asking if you'd like to join me in referencing, now, if San Carlos did a resolution last night, we can do a public letter. So if you are interested in joining these efforts for the reasons that this report, the judge clearly stated, just in summary, under the sheriff's leadership, morale is at the lowest that it's ever been. And the office at this time, staffing shortages are at an all-time high, leaving public safety at risk. That's our public safety as well. Lies, secrecy, intimidation, retaliation, conflicts of interest, abuse of authority are the hallmarks of the Corpus administration. This investigator, which is the judge, takes no pleasure in recommending that Sheriff Corpus step down and that Victor Arnell's employment with the sheriff's office be terminated immediately. Again, nothing short of new leadership will help the organization. So if you believe, as I believe, that we need to show support for not only the deputies' association, but yesterday, the share, the sergeants, lieutenants unanimously called for the immediate resignation of Corpus and undersheriff Pirna and former chief of staff Victor Arnell, then please just let me know. You can join me in that effort because it's time for us to show support to those people. And it's not happening any other way here. Our legislators have done it, state and federal, other cities, elected people, so just let me know along those lines there. And two, one thing that was learned from the San Carlos City Council is that at the end of each meeting, they have a discussion on things they would like to see on the agenda or future agenda. We don't have a formal way of doing that. We've run into roadblocks recently, so I would suggest that the next council come up with a more public way to really address issues you would like to see on future council meetings. It's very respectful, the way that San Carlos did it. And Millbrae needs to establish something that more clearly brings to the forefront what the council would like to see on agendas in the future. Thank you very much. So again, please let me know if you would like to join in these efforts.
All right.
Just to reiterate, and so under the Brown Act, the council cannot take action in co-authoring a letter that the vice mayor has indicated that she would like to author. And this is the time for the council comments on the committee reports, and I don't see any of the committees listed that refer to this matter. But I would just also point out that there are councilmember, there are protocols, and the protocols were adopted in 2015 for how to place an item on a, on an agenda. Just to remind the council that any councilmember may request that an item be placed on an agenda by submitting a request to the city manager. And then it will go on the next available agenda unless the mayor determines that it would be better to do it at a subsequent meeting, and it must be done, so must be done within two months of the request. So there are some protocols in place. Perhaps the council may wish to refine or revisit that, but those are the current procedures.
Thank you for the clarification there.
For the clarification for council, too, again, this is not an official act of the council, but as individual council members. You're saying that we can't act as individuals? I mean, we've done so in the past.
I think what the legal is explaining here, if I may, just, you know, everybody here, it's being afforded the freedom of speech. But the council cannot act on any kind of actions on council comment because it's not a properly agendized item. So.
Correct. And in the case of San Carlos, it's my understanding that it was on their agenda, and that's why they took action.
Well, I can ask that this be put on the next agenda then, so we can be more formal as San Carlos was. Their city manager actually approached the council, and it's very simple, very straightforward. So if that, in fact, is what council is suggesting, I will ask that this formally be put on the next agenda. I'm asking so in public. Do I need to put that in writing? Because we only have so many meetings left. So if we're waiting then for the mayor's approval, I don't believe that will happen within the timeframe allowed. So maybe the mayor would like to let me know here whether that would happen.
So, city manager, you would take the formal request for that agenda item, depending on what meeting is left? And perhaps the new mayor can figure out what that needs to happen.
Not necessarily the new mayor. I mean, we can do it beforehand.
We have the request, and then we will process it pursuant to the protocols.
Correct.
Well, that's my concern here. The protocols will be delayed.
The protocol is the protocol. The protocol is not delayed.
On the voice of the, of mayor, the mayor has what? Because we've been through this. We went through this with the leaf blower. We've been through this with the Voters Rights Act. The requests were exceptionally delayed. So I'd like this to take place before leaving office.
I'm not sure that has, the discussion, whether or not there needs to be an item to discuss. What, what do you want to discuss? Have a letter of?
Well, if it's going to be on the agenda, a resolution.
A resolution?
Yeah.
So you wanted a resolution, you're, so now you're saying you want to agendize a discussion or a resolution of?
No, no, no. I'd like consideration, agendize a consideration adopting a resolution stating that the city council's position of no confidence in Sheriff Christina Corpus and calling for the sheriff's resignation.
Okay. So that's your request. All right. So city manager would enter that into the record, and then we'll figure out the best timing to bring this forward for the council to act. All right. So on the transportation authority, BART's deficit is now looming to approximately $360 million, the latest number. I believe the MTC and TA are still discussing various options to resolve the fiscal cliff, but I think it's a priority that it cannot and must not jeopardize Measure A reauthorization that is coming up in 2030, twenty-eight and thirty-two, perhaps. More to come on that, as we want to make sure that each county is paying, in fact, their fair share. And I believe as far as BART is concerned, our morning riders, about nine percent of the system, but overall system-wide is roughly about six percent. So, but more to come on how to help BART to resolve their fiscal cliff. I just wanted to commend our DPW staff for keeping our landing lane free of flooding in this latest storm. I understand that you guys have spent quite a bit of time and the staff, you know, working around the clock to ensure that, you know, the entire east side is free of flooding and keeping the streets safe and accessible, and so I want to commend the staff on that. I mean, we as the city have made record investment in our east side neighborhood to keep the city's streets safe and accessible, and we will continue to do so throughout the years. So that's my update on council comment. Anyone else? Councilmember Snyder, any final words?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. You reminded me of, of SMTA. For the people of Millbrae, if you're still watching, SMTA has a lot of leftover money, and they have a project where they're trying to make better access to the neighborhoods that are hit, are impacted by 101. It's called the Mid-County Survey Request. And I don't know if we have sent that out there. Two of Millbrae projects had lines drawn on the initial application. I checked on it last week. It only had the lines for our two segments and not the little carrot that you pop on to vote for it. Farther down in the text, it does have Millbrae. Most of the projects are in Burlingame, San Mateo, or South San Francisco. We really need the people of Millbrae to say, yes, we need better access to Millbrae Avenue and to 101 on that. And I would love to have Justine put an announcement out on it. I didn't bring my own computer. I just forgot about that. It makes me, I, I am doing a study with a high school student right now, looking at transportation funding and who actually gets the funding, and my theory, and I'm doing this as if my, I'm a science packet at UC, is Millbrae does not get its fair share of these dollars across any, any grant program. But right now, we're looking at transportation funding. This is one of the ones we're looking at. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just along your lines, Mr. Mayor. MTC, first off, the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority is approaching the successes that they have had to date, and hopefully we will share those with the cities within the region to encourage cities to, or provide avenues for the cities to provide more affordable housing. And secondarily, the regional transportation measure, as the mayor noted, does not, at this point in time, have the, actually benefits to the cities and counties, city and county of San Mateo. So the current proposal, which was a four-county measure, we don't see a benefit to our county on that. I understand that the senator legislation is not forthcoming, but that BART may be looking for their own funding in three other counties for their shortfall. And again, San Mateo County has five stations. BART is expecting us to pay for the new fair gates, and that is well over $10 million. So we have some concerns as to that. BART is required to finish all the fair gates by early next year. So that'll be an interesting maneuver here. Thank you.
All right. If nothing else, I adjourn the meeting tonight at 10:38 PM. Thank you all.
Happy.[1767.83]